In this joint budget work session between the South Kingstown Town Council and the South Kingstown School Committee, our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at our last work session, I believe we got some complaints for not being loud enough, so I will ask everyone tonight to please speak directly into the microphone so people at home can hear. And are we on? All right. Well, I will let Rob lead us off here. Set the...
I will say first off that despite the fact that we had a leap day this year and the budget deadline was on the weekend, this thing still kicked our proverbials. We are putting together some last-minute tables for folks and we'll update the books and we will update the budget document tomorrow when those tables are completed. But I will jump into the good news with one new table that we haven't used before that should summarize the whole kit and caboodle. This is it. We are proposing a 2% property tax transfer as requested by the superintendent. That 2% property tax transfer is driving a relatively low increase in the overall cost of the program. We will be coming in with a...this proposed budget comes in with a proposed tax increase of 1.94%. We have done a couple of things here that I want to spend some time talking about, but the real rationale for being where we are, rather than taking advantage of the fact that we've got the opportunity to shift funds into the debt service through taxes, we could do a number of different things. This number, this proposal, really is aimed at taking a breather. It's really aimed at giving us a chance to sort of figure out where we're going to go in the future. We know from conversations with Linda, we know through conversations with folks on the municipal side, the next few years are going to be tough. We have large projects that we want to tackle and it's going to require us to rethink our programs. We know that we're not going to be able to get a 2% property tax transfer request every year when we're looking at $2.5 million worth of debt service in two and three years out. So we're going to have to manage the program very, very carefully going forward. This is not a complete abandonment of the idea that we need to pay it forward. If you look at the row at the bottom, we are still anticipating growth in the debt service fund. That's attributable to increased revenue coming in from the conveyance tax, real estate conveyance tax, and not a lot, but $110,000 worth of revenue coming in from fair share fees. So that's the story. I mean, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing a relatively low tax increase below the rate of inflation. CPI at this point is, for January to January, January 19th, 2019 to January of 2020, the rate of inflation was 2.49, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So we are well below the rate of inflation, both at the school transfer request and at the overall tax increase being driven by that and some increases in revenues. You'll look at the revenue row, the third row down, $703,000 worth of non-tax revenue increase. That's an 8% growth. Really what we're seeing there is $200,000 more being proposed by the governor in municipal non-education grants and aid. $250,000 in revenue from the EMS shift that we've put on the third shift there. Not sending or not requesting aid from Narragansett is already paying dividends and we anticipate it will generate more than $250,000 above what we generated and were able to transfer to the general fund last year. So we're anticipating $850,000 worth of revenue from EMS third-party billing. It's important for residents to know, we do not charge residents for overage. If your insurance company pays a particular rate, that's it, we're done. If an out-of-towner has an insurance company that doesn't pay, we will go after the full fee. We are currently adjusting our fees and in fact, one of the things we're going to ask the council to do as part of the budget process is to increase our fees, which have not been increased since 2014. We are proposing fee changes that are still below the state average despite the fact that we are paramedic, a paramedic service as opposed to an EMT service. So we're asking the council to consider raising the fees to below the state average for quality of service that's really higher than what you would see in most municipalities around the state. That however, is not essential for us to see these revenues. What we're really seeing is that we've modernized and we've hired a new vendor to deal with collections. They're just on top of their game. They're just really, we're seeing dramatically increased revenues there. And again, $250,000 is a big chunk of change. We are also seeing significant increases in the hotel, meals, and beverages tax. Not huge, but $48,000 to $50,000 in increased revenue from those sources. So, you know, all of that helps and it gets us to a pretty solid revenue base, again, with the responsible budgeting that the schools have done this year. You know, 2%, when you're starting out with 75% of your budget at or below inflation, it made all the difference this year. It really has been a tremendously helpful first step. So again, we see it as a breather budget. We see this as a chance to relax, let folks, you know, settle in. We've had two tax increases over the last two cycles that were above the rate of inflation. We came in last year with a significant increase and the year before that, we were still at 3.2%, which was above inflation then. So this is, we think, an appropriate time for us to reset the stage and begin to bring some discipline to our discussions as we already think about the budget for the next fiscal year out, one more year out, because we are building toward that large debt service. You know, the total debt service, if we are successful with referendums for $6.5 million worth of municipal infrastructure improvements and $79 million toward an $85 million project on the school side, the debt service on those two chunks is going to be about $2.9 million a year at the height. Now, it comes down over time, but at its height, it's going to be $2.9 million. It's a big chunk of change. We just saw, what was it, $700,000 this year for the school decline? And that's probably the last time we're going to have to deal with that. So we've got baked into our future that sort of revenue decline going away. So that's good news for us, but that only gets us about a third of the way to where we need to be. We're going to need to figure out how to do that other two-thirds without overburdening the taxpayers. I think we can do it. I'm pretty comfortable with where we are right now. We are, let's see, let's go through this slide. This is how we pulled off this year's numbers. The superintendent's request at 2% helped tremendously. The governor has proposed substantial increases in non-education state grants and aid. South Kingstown businesses have thrived and therefore we've seen the hotel and meals tax. We have fully implemented improvements to the third-party billing program at EMS. We have decided not to recommend levying property taxes in order to further capitalize debt service, but we will see these two sources of revenue coming into that debt service fund during the course of the year. And again, another element of this is the town departments have level-funded their programs. There are some changes and I'll go through those in a minute, but we've essentially got a flat budget at DPS. We've essentially got a flat budget at recreation. We're not adding people over there, either of those programs. Where we have added people, the police department, it's really to make permanent a position that the town council approved last year to deal with an OG, on-the-job injury position. That person has now left and we want to make that, we want to backfill that position. The four EM, the four paramedics that we've hired are going to pay for themselves, so I'm not worried about that one. We have requested a part-time human resource generalist, and the idea here is really that we need to start getting a handle on our training and our performance appraisal system. We currently do not do job performance appraisals in South Kingstown. We haven't done them and I think we would benefit from having personnel get feedback from their supervisors. So you have to stand up a program, you have to train your supervisors how to engage in those conversations, which can be difficult at times. And then you have to tie, I think, performance to training. If we've got an underperforming employee, they deserve the training to make sure that they can get to where they need to be. And beyond that, I think it's important for us to dedicate ourselves, as the schools do, to professional development of all our employees. I think our employees should have the opportunity to come in and sit down with their supervisor once a year and say, hey, five years from now, what I want to be doing is X, Y, and Z. Is there training out there that I can take? We've done this here informally, but I'd like to see us roll out a full program. And then the last personnel, do you remember? What's our last request? The animal shelter, of course. Our animal shelter for years has relied very heavily on volunteers. It's become abundantly clear in the last couple of years that we need to have a supervisor who's on the ground, paying attention not just to the animals, but also to the administrative systems. We've had some challenges that are just perfect, it's perfectly clear, we need to bring somebody in who's in charge of the operation, not just the care and custody of the animals. But aside from that, we're not, you know, we're not seeing changes in the municipal The other aspect of sort of flatness is we've actually seen some retrenchment, aside from the fact that the capital budget for next year is larger than the capital budget last year. It is larger only because we have to fund the revaluation. If you take the revaluation, which is state-mandated, out of the capital budget, we've actually seen a 30% decline in actual purchases of equipment and the things that we're ultimately going to need. Now, part of that's because we're strategically thinking about that $6.5 million bond and addressing our road improvement issues there instead of in the operating budget this year. What else we got? Another bit of good news, as of last year, South Kingstown is still, oh, sorry, South Kingstown is still the 10th lowest tax rate in the state of Rhode Island, and I suspect that if we can keep to a 1.94% increase, we're going to see ourselves even improve our standing on that list. So we're pretty excited about, you know, where we are. I would love to say that it's due to, you know, Zach and my financial genius, the truth of the matter is, when 75% of your budget comes in below inflation and you see increases in revenue, it's not too hard to make a budget that works like this one. CPI, 2.49. And we'll take questions. But what I'd really like to focus on tonight at some point is the discussion around how we're going to deal with this stuff coming up two years out. I don't think this year is our problem. I think our problem is two years out.
All right. Thanks, Rob. And we've already heard largely the proposal from the schools, which is a little different than most years at this point. Did you have any presentation to make, Linda, tonight?
I don't have a presentation per se. We did add frequently asked questions based upon the feedback we had last time we were here and also conversations and questions that had happened prior to, during our budget season and then since. So that's available on our website and we have hard copies. It's not anything, I know there's a full agenda and it's not something we need to go through, but that is available for folks, so just to share that based on those conversations and questions that we continue to have, we'll continue to help folks to understand and try to be as transparent as we can be. And thank you for all your help and support as we've stepped through this budget season.
Thank you. Linda, I'm sorry, where is that on the website?
The last time I was, when I was here to show the presentation, I had shown it, but I'm right on our main page of the schools' website, so skschools.net. Right under, kind of the quickest way to get there is if folks scroll down underneath News, there's an announcement that says the FY21 budget is available. And then from that link, that's kind of the shortcut to get there. And right from that page will bring you to the budget, the budget report, if you will, the budget presentation, and then also the frequently asked questions. So just skschools.net, and then if you scroll down underneath the News, it says FY21 SKSD proposed budget.
Any questions for Rob?
I don't really have a question, but I just had a comment because I think it was number four on your list. We struggled a year or two ago to try to find, I think it was probably a year ago now, adding EMT service. So I guess what I'm not happy about is that we struggled to do it, but yet it's a revenue-generating, pay-for-itself kind of situation, which is also important because people are getting service better, quicker, and from what I heard the other day is mutual aid calls have been hardly any overnight in terms of EMS.
So there were a couple of things that we really had to struggle with. One was just figuring out how to stand up that crew. We didn't really have a place for them. We had to decide whether we were going to build out the station house down at the old police station, the DPS second floor. We had to get that going. Then the other piece of it was, it wasn't perfectly clear that we were going to see the revenue that we're seeing. We did have this sense that changing vendors and modernizing our system would have an impact. We've been delighted with what we're actually seeing. It's really startling how much more revenue we're seeing.
Rob, on the previous slide, I noticed the FY20, 2020, 21 fund balance, the rainy day fund at 15.9% of the operating budget, that seems like a pretty big, I mean, last year was 16.14. Both those numbers seem higher than I recollect them being. Have we started recalculating how we measure that?
It is in fact, you know, that's pretty consistent growth over the last five years. Let's see, I've got this here. In '15, we were at 13.15%. In '16, we're at 13.18. In '17, we were at 13.53. In '18, we were at 14.84, and last year, we were at 16.4. So it's been a steady increase over the last five years. We've actually taken some of the fund balance, as you know, the council's policy is to be between 10 and 17%. We were getting closer to the 17 that I thought was necessary, given, you know, everything else we've got going on. So we have seen some of that money that will be put into this year's operating budget. And it's lower than it was last year. Last year, we put $550,000 from operating, from fund balance into the operating budget. This year, we're putting 500.
Well, that's good news.
So, and then the 1920 budget then, any idea on the surplus?
Yes. DPS is snow plowing and salt and sand budget is only 23% expended. The piles are full. If we wanted to buy salt and sand, which is what we typically do at the end of the year, we couldn't, we can't, there's nowhere to put it. So unless we see some pretty significant winter weather over the next few weeks, we're going to have 75-plus percent of that budget coming back into the general fund.
Any other areas that are off the top of your head? That's, I'm sure...
That would be the biggest one. The rest of it's pretty flat because most of it's personnel and administration. But we're working through that to come up with the projected final would be.
And we're months away, I get that.
All right. Any other questions here?
Just a couple of observations. So the picture certainly looks better. I still have some concerns. I'm real happy that it seems, at least, except for the revale, the municipal side, the capital budget is flat or less spending than last year. Seems the operational budget is pretty well under control. On the school side, I still have some concerns with the employee-to-student ratio, and I have some concerns about, I'm not sure that I've seen a real effort toward funding maintenance of the facilities. So those are my two biggest, I'll leave it at that. Those are my two biggest at this point.
Mr. President, if I may, I think that those are correct observations. I mean, the truth is, we're seeing a 5% growth in the general fund this year. The general fund has increased. In part, that's because we've not been, we've been more conservative in estimating benefits than the schools have. We've went, we went with a full, you know, 8%. There's some reason to believe that we're going to come in significantly below that and that schools have. What was your benefits, your insurance?
Health insurance, the latest thing we received from the trust was between 0 and 3%. And what we put the budget at that was presented to you in the council was a 2% increase.
Right. So they've, you know, not been as conservative in their estimation of the cost of benefits. I think we are, we are unduly conservative on that account right now, and to be honest with you, it's because we hadn't heard from the trust and that was last year and it just made sense to continue there. As we continue through this budget cycle, we may find that that number can come down. But what's driving this budget more than anything else is the schools coming in with a property tax transfer request of 2%. This is the path forward. This is the way we're going to be able to fund large school projects. If we can come in at 2% budgets in the future, we are going to have the resources we need to pay for capital improvements. The state of Rhode Island is going to give us half the cost of construction. That's good. And we're not going to have the pain that we've had in the declining operating revenues from the state. That's also good. But we are still going to have a $2 million expense for each year for several years, and we've got to figure out how to deal with that. Getting to 2% each of those years goes a long way to making it possible to keep those funds going into the capital or into the debt service. Now, there's some things that get disguised or not disguised, I don't want to imply that anybody's hiding it, it's there, but this number, the 2% property tax transfer, doesn't take into account the fact that we are covering 800 and, what's the odd, the number, $366,000 more in debt service for the $4 million that was just done for roofs and securities. There's another $500,000 out there. We're $800,000 plus on top of the 2% transfer. The education program really brings with it those costs as well. So we've got to figure out how to make sure we're in this range, otherwise, as that 800 becomes 2 million, we're not going to be able to sustain low taxes that are acceptable to taxpayers and we're not going to be able to see the program succeed. I mean, I think that we're, we run the risk, if we're not aiming for inflation on the operating side, of hitting 4% increases which are going to just be hugely problematic.
I appreciate that, Rob. There are some assumptions in what you say, though. We don't know that the funding level will be flat. We don't know a few of the other things that you mentioned there. We could imagine that if we're still viewed as an inefficient district with a high cost per student, that we may suffer some more. I mean, so I trust that you and Zach have, you know, taken a deep dive into this and I have confidence in what you say, but there are some assumptions in there. And 5% of the municipal budget is a lot less money than 5%. And I understand that the schools are not at 5%, but some real concern is if we don't solve some, in my opinion, inefficiencies, high cost per pupil are two of the big ones that could jeopardize a lot of this.
So I will say that it's not just Zach and I, it's Zach and Linda and I and Mary Ann who are having these conversations, and I think we all recognize that efficiencies need to be found. We've got to figure out a way to stay closer to this number than we have in the past. If we can't do that, then really, the project becomes, the school facilities project becomes problematic, not for everybody. I mean, the cost of the project for the typical $352,000 household and valued house in South Kingstown is 200, $250 added to the bill. It's not, it's not a huge number, but 200, $250 is a significant number for a lot of people. We've run, you know, these models to look at what happens if you've got, you know, student loans and if you're paying for childcare and if you're paying for, you know, two-car, two-car loans on top of that. Life gets pretty miserable when you can't find an extra 200 bucks. And, you know, the median household income in South Kingstown now is $80,000. And that sounds like a decent income, and it is, until you start figuring in the cost of a mortgage on a $380,000 home and the cost of daycare and the cost of, it gets pretty short pretty quick.
Rob, for what I remember, I think a family needs to make $78,000 or something to afford the average home in our town approximately. I forget if it's, I might be off.
I don't.
It might be old numbers, but I guess what I'm getting at is that we're talking about, you keep saying 2% is great, but I think you're going to find that there are going to be people that are very concerned that with the declining enrollment, et cetera, in all these true stories or not true stories or rumors going around, people are struggling to wrap their head around it. So is there anything that you can share with the public or Linda as to why the 2% is needed?
I mean, I can go through the entire presentation again. I can speak to the goals and the focus areas. Or I can kind of defend it from the perspective, I had kind of gone a little narrative, if you could give me one second.
Sure, take your time.
Rob, I'll express a few thoughts while she's looking for, you have some answers there.
there. I don't necessarily believe just because they are coming in at a request that's below inflation, that means, you know, the whole budget will necessarily be below inflation or the increase in the tax levy, that is. Last year, we gave them a below inflation increase in the property tax transfer, yet the entire budget saw an increase in the tax levy of near 4%. So I just kind of would like to counter your thoughts there based on what we saw last year. Certainly, they came in below inflation with what the actual increase in the property tax transfer was. However, we saw an increase in the property tax levy overall of about near 4%. The municipal budget, I think, had an increase of around 6%. So if you're going to make the claim that we feel comfortable or we feel comfortable to the extent that an increase in the property tax levy of below inflation is good for this budget, then we need to reel in the municipal budget. We can't see, you know, increases in excess of that, otherwise we get near inflation or beyond that. So we saw that last year and I just want to make that point.
Sure. But last year's budget was not driven by growth on the municipal side entirely. And this year's municipal side increase, while higher than inflation, it also reflects debt service, which, you know, benefits the schools. And it also reflects changes to the program that, you know, are necessary for us to do things like cost avoidance. One of the things that, small thing, but one of the things that we've recommended in this budget is that we establish a scholarship fund of $10,000 for the volunteer firefighters so that we can do some recruitment and some retention. These, these things are small, but on a small budget, they add up. We've proposed that we create a fund for matching grants for improvements to the infrastructure in the villages. Again, $10,000, not a big number, but on a small budget, these things add up. $3,000 we've proposed for the, to help a nonprofit organization set up a revolving loan fund for historic preservation in our villages. Again, small money, but potentially a big difference, huge benefit. The cost of the program has to be constrained. I agree with you. I think, I think you're right that we have an obligation to make sure that we are not spending taxpayer money without very careful consideration being given to every proposal we make. But we also have an obligation to make sure that we're doing the right things for the community. When we see an increase in hotel tax and when we see an increase in beverage and meal taxes, and we've got merchants who are saying, where's the benefit to us? What's happening that improves the villages where we make our livings, where we are generating these revenues that the town is benefiting from? What are we, what are we seeing from the community? What are we seeing from the town that's putting back into the engine that's generating this income, this revenue for the town? We have a duty to make sure that we're paying attention to the needs of the whole community. And sometimes that means spending money so that you can increase the likelihood that the hotel and meals tax increases again the net. My only point there is, the number, the absolute number, the number of increase matters. But we have to understand all of these numbers in the totality of the program, just as we have to understand that the school program is designed and should be designed to achieve educational outcomes that are well-defined and measurable. When we propose spending on the municipal side, we should be able to tell the council exactly what we expect to see. And if we miss our mark, if we go out and we try to start up a revolving loan fund and it doesn't work, we've got to be willing to come back and say, it didn't work and we're going to stop it. If we are going to do an infrastructure program with the expectation that businesses who've been calling for such a thing really are right and we find that they're not, then we have to, we have to pull back and say, we tried it, it didn't work, we're not going to do it again. Similarly, when you've got an education program that needs to experiment and try things, when they don't work, we've got to figure out how to disengage from ineffective approaches. And again, finding the efficiencies on their side and our side is, is one of our highest priorities.
I just want to clarify because I, I sense some misunderstanding in Roy, your question because I think the 1.94% that Rob was talking about being lower than the cost of inflation does include the whole municipal side and whatever increases in spending there.
I was just refuting the claim that Rob was saying that an increase in the property tax transfer to appropriate to the schools that becomes in below inflation is favorable toward our budget. Well, obviously, we saw that last year where it came in below inflation, but it ended up our entire budget being a near 4% increase in the tax levy. I was just simply making that claim. Something to consider, something we should all consider.
And, sorry, Linda, before you answer that other question I asked, I just thought of something else. You weren't here last year, but we had a, you know, a pretty contentious budget meeting where I believe the budget passed at a certain number, I forget what number it was. But I think what really bothered a lot of people and some people on the council afterwards was that magically there was money that was found after the fact. So if you could touch on that as well, or if Rob could touch on that. I don't remember too much about it, but it, it was like a significant number, maybe $500,000 to $700,000 of money that was found?
500, maybe.
Okay.
We talked about that a little bit last time.
Oops, sorry.
We talked about this a little bit at the, at our last meeting. So we've dug into that a little bit more since the last meeting. I wasn't here for that piece. There were layoffs that took place and then kind of a second round of layoffs after that. It's, it's, you know, I'm going to say this. I've been here six months. I have said, I love every minute. I've loved every minute. I'm grateful. I have not had one second of regret. But I have had many, many hours of frustration around the fact that I began here July 11th, 11 days after a budget began. There's nothing worse. I didn't think about it. I inherited a budget that I didn't build. And not only the budget, but, you know, if you think about like your home, the house, you didn't build, everything in it that you didn't do. And then guess what? Every month you get the milk delivered by Peapod or whoever that you don't want. So all those pieces of a budget, I inherited that with knowing that I had an entire year to go. So I have, so this is sensitive to me. I just want to, you know, explain that, this process, building this, as everybody in this school district can tell you, we went through a very transparent, long process in our budget season. Could it be better? Absolutely. Absolutely, it can be better. It will be better. And the budget season doesn't end tonight or the night that you all vote. It goes on every day. Today, I was working on federal grants for this fiscal year. We try very hard to be transparent with all we do. I am proud of that. So it feels like last year, whether there was anxiety, chaos, whatever happened, I've tried not to do that because I feel like there's a cost to that. And maybe that, I'm going to assume good intentions as I have every other day I've been here and I'm going to assume good intentions around that, 500, 580. But clearly, it was not fair to folks here. I would be horrified if that happened here with us. I, I, I think the other piece is the communication that we have, that Maryann and I have with Rob and Zach, that we work really hard at and continue. I talk with Rob and Zach. We, we meet, talk, chat, text, call as much as I do with my administrative team. They are, we are a team and I'm grateful for that. And I think that's important, very critical. So I just have to kind of like air that. So I'm sorry for all that we've been through. We can dig in and sit around the 580 and kind of the specifics to it. But I do hope that we can at some point look forward because I need your help looking forward. I also, I'll share, and I don't, I don't want to like answer a question that you're not asking. I will say like in the frequently asked questions, I did reflect because you had said, shared, you know, really like it's, we need to justify, we need to talk about why we see a decrease in our enrollment and yet an increase in your request. And so we, I've taken a look, you know, I know we have seen 59 students projected decrease for next year. So 2.06 decrease. And it feels like that's, that's a significant, okay, Linda, that's a lot. But the bottom line is that's an average of four, four students a grade level. So then when, so we're not reducing staff with four students at a grade level. And I think that's, you know, kind of been the trickling in of impact we've had with enrollment. While we've had the increase in needs, and I know I shared at our last meeting as well, seeing the decrease in, in the students, but the increase in 504, which is directly connected to medical supports that we provide for our students. Ultimately, we know we're presenting you with a budget that is asking for, our general fund budget is 0.76% higher. We know our request from you is 2% higher. But overall, you know, we're looking at the 0.76. We know also that we're seeing 13.22% less in our state aid, $700,000. So, so together, how does that come together? How do we work? We know that we, we have planned a budget that we want to sustain and move forward for excellence for all of our students. I wholeheartedly feel that this request is essential, that we are not padding anything. And with that said, just, I had said at the last meeting, that with that said, there is not a place, like if a roof blows off tomorrow, I am knocking on your door. There's not like padding that exists in this budget. It's, we've, we've worked hard for it to be transparent. It's, I see why some superintendents find that uncomfortable. But with that said, it's, I don't, it feels, if you're ethical, this is the way you need to roll with your budget. I can go into the areas, educational areas, if that's the other piece. You know, this truly is, we've like highlighted what are our focus areas this year for our budget. And those areas are the pieces that we're coming forward to defend and claim. You know, we know we want STEAM and dual language for all of our students, not just for some. We know that we're, I spent a good portion of my morning around social emotional learning and what we're doing to put those pieces in place. We need a lot of revamping and supporting and rebuilding for all of our children and our staff to be able to support the needs that are different from what we've seen in my 30-year career. We're expanding project lead the way, so looking at a K through 12 program for our STEAM or our engineering, computer science. Also, we know that we're working hard as a professional learning community. And that, I don't just give lip service to that. I want us to live that with fidelity. But that's hard work to continually improve while you're constantly analyzing the data in front of you. So that's, these are kind of our focus areas in a nutshell and what we're committed to.
Linda, could you also just speak to the presentation that you put together for the school committee? And I know you did present it for the town council, but maybe just to bring that back up to answer or to speak to Joe's point about the employee to student ratio? Because we have looked at that several times and Linda did create a link that's available on the website, but maybe just to reference the explanation that you had given for that.
Also, I had referenced it again in the frequently, I have, I have additional copies with me, too.
While they're passing that out. Rory, I think your point is, is well-taken. I mean, I think you're right that we shouldn't sort of believe that there's a magic wand and that inflation is the be-all and end-all of things. What inflationary increases do, though, is they provide discipline. They keep us grounded on something that affects everybody more or less equally. It actually turns out, we just looked it up, that the Consumer Price Index for June 18 to June 19 was 1.65. The proposal last year was for 1. The actual give on the property tax transfer was 2.5. Part of last year's problem is we didn't have that discipline.
Rob, I believe the actual give was 1.75. The initial request was 2.5.
You're right.
Any other?
Emily had just asked me on page 12, we had, there's a, I broke the FAQ down into sections and there's a staffing section. And we shared this at the last meeting, but I think Emily was asking, I think this is the chart. So the chart compares certified staffing over time, all staff, so certified staff are teachers, and then all staff encompasses all employees. And so what we're looking at is the percent change from year to year as, and then as compared to pre-K through 12 students and then K to 12. Because there were some years that our pre-K population decreased more dramatically than other grades. So this chart was just comparing that. But I also wanted to share that at our last meeting, you had asked around North Kingstown and Portsmouth and a comparison to that. So on pages 13 and 14, I put the background in from the National Center for Education Statistics and then also dug into their budgets in previous years to kind of take a look at. And again, we talked about the fact that how folks define staff may be a little bit different from district to district. I came from a district where occupational therapists and physical therapists were not on staff. Here in this district, they are on staff. So those kinds of things look different from town to town. Some folks have custodial staff, for example, and some have, hire them as vendors. So that will, that, so just if we can kind of have that in the back of our minds. But I just compared the most recent couple of years and how we looked at staffing, their student population, and then their ratios of South Kingstown versus Portsmouth versus North Kingstown. Just because those were the, some of the questions that had fallen out of here. And when we take a look at that, I'll just, the ratios, South Kingstown, 18, 19 at a 6.1 ratio of staff to students in 19, 20, 6.4. And again, it's all staff, not just certified. And then Portsmouth, 7.5 and 7.6, and then North Kingstown, 7.0. And again, it's not apples to apples, but we know that when we're looking at this information.
So just, just one thing I want to point out, your presentation, and I understand the challenges that you have. You have, you know, certain sectors of your student population that need more resources. And I don't question that you guys have done a great job, staff has done a great job, getting to where we are. Just two observations. The state aid is still taxpayer money. We're down $700,000, but it's taxpayer dollars. It's not like this is some magic fund that appears from the state and it didn't come from our pocket. And we knew that, we knew that the 700,000 was coming. The question is, did we plan for it? I trust that you did because you've done a great job on the presentation, a great job on preparation of the budget. That's taxpayer money and we knew it was coming. I question whether we could have planned better, but I'm not saying that you didn't.
So Joe, I just want to point out that the taxpayer money that the state is just went to other districts, right? to other districts, right? It, we still paid it. We just didn't reap the benefit of it, right? I think that's important. I also think this frequently asked question sheet that you've developed will help people to understand where the school budget comes from. I think, I think people struggle with, as I mentioned before, with that decline in enrollment and an increase in the revenue, right? And when you say we, we're projecting a 59 student drop, and it's not all from first grade, like we're just not canceling two classrooms, right? You know, it's four students here and three students here. I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, that, that a 59 person, a student drop does not equate to three teachers. It just doesn't, you know? And so I, I don't know, I just think this, that you've developed this frequently asked question, will help to address some of those concerns.
Deb, I get your, your example about how the money was still spent, was spent somewhere else.
Right. That's the problem, Joe, is the money went somewhere else.
I get that, but there's, there's, listen, on the federal level, there's a bridge to nowhere that could build because somebody didn't want to give the money up that was coming. It's not, it's not, it's not a reason to increase or decrease your spending based on whether or not you might get, or someone else is getting. So I understand your point, but it, it sort of, it sort of invites inefficiencies across the whole system, not just this system.
But unfortunately, we're left holding the bag, right? Because the $700,000 went somewhere else.
I understand. And you go to the urban districts and they're much better funded by the state.
And they're hurting. I understand.
And they're funded by the state with taxpayer dollars. That's the point I was making. Thanks.
I think some good information for the council. You know, I've had a subsequent meeting, if you can answer this tonight, I asked this previously, but I know you're coming in with a 2% ask in the, in the increase in the property tax transfer. And you've given a lot of detail to us, and I appreciate that. You guys have done a good job with this budget. If in fact, the council were to give less than a 2% increase in the property tax transfer, what expenses would be reduced and how critical would that be to the educational system? I know the last time I asked that, you guys decided you'd have to go program by program and really determine that. If you guys can give us an idea of what that is, how much impact that will have, we may be more inclined to give you 2%, but you know, I think that's, you know, an important question to get answers to.
I, I would just, and I'll work with the budget subcommittee on that.
I think that we've talked about that. The last couple of meetings that we've had together in the budget subcommittee has been very clear from the beginning of when we all worked together, town council and the school committee with administration, that this budget was built by looking at what the needs in each building were, asking, talking to the teachers, talking to the building administrators, and coming up with what the needs are in that way. And so Linda, and I think we've had this conversation as well around the table, have answered that a few times, that we would need to go back to the budget subcommittee and start from scratch, from the beginning, asking the teachers and the building administrators how we would differently build a budget. Because this is what it is based on what the projected student needs are.
So the 2% increase is initial ask. The council appropriates money to the school committee. In some senses, this is somewhat of a negotiation, and we understand that you've established this based on the need. My question is, if in the fact that need does not get satisfied, what will the impacts be to your budget and to the educational system at whole? I'm hoping that you guys can provide answers to that.
The answer is, is that instead of, that's the way that it's always, as far as I've been paying attention, that's the way that it's been done, is here's the ask, here's what the council comes back with, and maybe we can meet somewhere in the middle. Instead of going through that sort of contentious process where you've got students and individual programs fighting against one another, that didn't seem to be very, very helpful for anyone or healthy for anybody. And instead, we decided as a budget subcommittee to collaborate ahead of time outside of these meetings to bring a budget that everybody felt, in the subcommittee, which was made up of several different representatives from different places, to bring a budget that was what the numbers were. Instead of, as Linda said, there's no cushion or padding or extra things added in. This is what the budget is if we are going to provide an educational program to the South Kingstown students that the people in this community are accustomed to. So there isn't somewhere unless you wanted to go back and look at educational programs. So there are certain things that are, we're bound to by law, and there are other things that I think our district is accustomed to. So it would be going back to that. There isn't, oh, there's some extra stuff here and some extra stuff there that we'll just cut out. It would be going back to redevelop the educational program that we're anticipating on delivering, starting in September. That's the honest answer.
So first off-
It's been answered that way a few times. There's not a secret.
First off, I appreciate the work the school committee and the superintendent has done on their budget, but we are voting on a $55 million appropriation to the school committee. And if we want additional answers to additional questions, I think that warrants a response. I think we'd have to go back and reestablish the cost that relates to each program. It's pretty vague in my mind. I'd like to see some specifics. I hope you can provide that. There are more meetings in the future. Hopefully you can.
The specifics are all available in the budget. There is a much more specific budget than this FAQ. There's a presentation that Linda gave during our last meeting that has multiple links and citations. So that, that's where all of the answers are. And the simple answer to the question that you've asked a few times and has been answered by our superintendent, by our CFO, and by members of the committee, is that if you were not willing to move forward with a 2%, that's, would require that we go back as a budget subcommittee and start back from the beginning. But that's the answer to the question at this time.
So I would have to say that with, and I unfortunately do not have this document with me tonight. And I, I'm not fast enough to pull it up, but the budget documents that were presented by our committee to the council went through, the, the costs were broken down by category and Ms. Savastano and Mrs. Crawford gave the, the codes that are, that are required by the state accounting system. And then that budget was another, not another presentation, another part of that presentation was broken down by schools. And you, you would like us to answer the question, okay, if we're not going to give you 2%, what are you going to cut? What we're trying to tell you is, if that's the case, that you are not going to give us 2%, we've told you what we need to do. We need to go back and have the budget subcommittee meet again and go through and decide what, what, and I'm not going to name a program, because then the community will like say that I'm advising cutting a particular program. But as Ms. Kaminski said, then you're talking about which, which program do you want to put on the chopping block? We built a budget so that we can provide excellence in education for all of our students to take every one of those children that come to us and meet their educational needs and provide them with excellence in education. You got an excellent education here in the South Kingstown schools. My children got an excellent education here in the South Kingstown schools. I got an excellent education in the South Kingstown schools. I personally very strongly believe we owe the children that are in our district now excellence at every single level from pre-K to 12. And we need to be educating these young people with 21st century learning, 21st century skills. Not the skills I got here in the 60s. The, the skills that our kids need in the 21st century. I think the, the programs that are being developed at the high school are cutting edge. The, the, they're not vocational programs, help me out. The CTE programs that are being developed at the high school are, are varied. The, the, the needs of our students with disabilities need to be met. We're, we're, we're providing excellence in education for all our students. And so if you're going to tell us tonight or some other night before the budget is final, that you're not going to give us 2%, we can't answer that question now. We need to go back to the drawing board. But I assure you, programs will get cut. Because this budget was built on needs, not pipe dreams, not fantasies, not caviar. Needs of our students and the needs that our teachers, the things our teachers need to provide for those students.
Michelle, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but I think from the town council's perspective, we're trying, we can't just write a check without asking questions and being as judicious as we can with our taxpayers' money. So, right. And in the past, like I don't know if it was last year or the year before, we did ask that question, I think, one time, and it kind of didn't come back, came back with a totally different number. But I think Rory's question's a very valid question. So how can we get an answer to that?
I actually think Rory's, I actually think Rory's heading us down a path that's very fruitful if we, if we can stay here. If we, if we can keep from getting engaged in, in sort of an emotional tug of war about this stuff. What Rory's asking is, what do we mean by excellence? What do we mean by excellence? What, what does that mean? How do we know when we've got it? How do we know that we should change it up if, if we're not there? And, and he's asking us to, and he's asked me to do the same thing tonight. Demonstrate that what you're doing with that 5% is actually beneficial. And that's exactly the right thing for, for an elected official to ask public servants. And, and we should be asking that question and we should be able to answer it. What do we mean by excellence? What do we mean by, by success?
So Rory, I do, I think it's a great question. And I don't think that it, it needs to be an emotionally charged conversation. I think it's an important conversation to have. But if you're, if you're looking for, my point is, if you're looking for like a line item or an area, we don't have any identified. Because this budget is assuming that we're maintaining programming that the district is accustomed to. If you're looking for what it means, what an excellent program means, I think that you can find it in Linda's previous presentations, where it looks at what we're focusing on. And we know that our students' test scores have dropped over the years, and that's a focus area we need to, and we are actively looking at. We have Gina here, who is our new, well, I don't know how long we call you new, but who is our Director of Curriculum and Innovation. In the areas that she's focusing on are looking at math and English and health, specifically social emotional. So looking at how can we make sure that all of our students have growth? We know that we have a pretty significant gap. I sent you guys all a letter that cited some of the areas where our gaps are. I believe it was on the agenda of the last town council meeting, between our students that are economically disadvantaged and our students that are not. And those, we need to make sure that we're looking at the student growth, that they are growing at the, at the same level and/or having the opportunity to grow at the same level that other students that aren't from those areas or from that subpopulation. We need all of our students to have the opportunity to succeed and to graduate being prepared to enter either the workforce or the college setting. So those are the areas that we're focusing on. And I think that all of our students deserve that opportunity. So that's sort of the academic excellence side that is definitely a focus in this budget. I also think that we want our students, Michelle referenced our CTEs. And our CTEs are varied and they're also in align with what our community college is offering in terms of pathways to careers, which I think is really awesome. If in the year 2021, September 21, the nursing, nursing program at CCRI is going to require that students have their CNA as a prerequisite. We have students that are graduating with a CNA, and their prerequisites for the nursing program. They'll be able to move right on, our students from SK move right on into CCRI and get, graduate with an RN in two years with no college debt. I think that's, that's an example of excellence. But that's the looking at a high school level. We heard a presentation a couple of weeks ago by one of the elementary principals who's talking about how they're using their space in their building. And in the morning, students are coming in and there are pools set up where they're developing a boat that will float and on their own, kindergarten, first grade kids figuring out what will make something float and what will happen if you put more weight on that, or if you change that, what would happen to it. I think these are questions that are going to make our kids have better critical thinking and problem solving skills. That's excellent. That, to me, that's what's excellent.
So I'm, I'm gonna-
Not really sure what else, anybody else has to add, but I, I believe that the, the budget is being built to address what is excellent. Test scores, critical thinking, social emotional health.
So I'm going to acknowledge that education is more complicated in many ways than road construction. But if we ask John Schock, how do you know you've succeeded with your road repaving program? He's going to tell us how many inches of tarmac he needs. He's going to tell us what the cost is, and he's going to tell us how long that, that road repavement is going to last. He can define his success relatively easy. Educational success is harder to define, but it's also important to define. If success is test scores, maybe it shouldn't be, but if it is test scores, then, then how do we get to? How do we produce that success is the question? If the success is high school graduation, then how do we produce? There's, there's a method for methodically going through and achieving step by step, the things you have to do to get to better test scores, to get to graduation, to get to college entrance, to whatever the measure is. But the, the question, what do we mean by success? And how do we produce success? Those two questions should be questions that, that are boundable, answerable.
And I think that, that's what I was speaking to, is that there are many pieces to the pie. So graduation rate is great, but if your students are graduating and they're not successful in college and or career, have we really met our goals as educational system? So I think those are the questions that we're looking at. And I think test scores definitely are a piece of the pie of what a successful educational program looks like, but it's only one piece of the pie.
I'm just going to throw it out there. Excuse me. Is money the most important factor in success? I mean, that's just something to think about. And I know we're looking at it from a dollar standpoint, but if we're talking about excellence, what truly is excellence? And how do you get there? Are we going about it? Again, we're not educators on this side. Are we going about it the right way?
So it's also sort of a truism for all facets of, of public and private life, that if you're focused on everything, you're focused on nothing. So defining your, your targets, saying this is the metric we're going to focus in on matters.
I don't know. Serving on the budget subcommittee, I believe that the schools have done that in this budget process. And I would say that- And I would say that money is not the ultimate measure, but money, when you're talking about the schools, 90% of the budget being staffing, what you're talking about is teachers in the classroom. So, um, I mean, I think that's the way to think about it. And I think that there's a direct link between teachers in the classroom and quality of education that the children are receiving.
So I appreciate that. Emily, I, I appreciate everything that you've said and I agree with, with your, your goals. Um, one thing that you said though struck a nerve and you said, we're trying to maintain a system that promotes excellence. And my point has been all along that in this program that's striving for excellence, there are inefficiencies in the employee to student ratio and the cost per student. Um, there are inefficient, inefficiencies. So if we're trying to maintain it, we need to solve those inefficiencies to save some dollars. And the council is charged with protecting the taxpayer as well as supporting your program.
A hundred percent. And Joe, um, from the moment that Linda came into this district, um, in my first meetings with her, and I think that the rest of the committee has asked similar questions um, in public meetings as well, is how can we become efficient while also ensuring that we are moving in, in, with our educational program, um, more into 21st century style learning? Um, and there is, I hate to keep, well, not that I hate to, but I keep referencing slides that are available. Um, there is a whole slide deck available on the utilization of the buildings um, for the projected programming that's being planned for September. Um, and then also what the programming looks like, uh, with the building utilization looks like for programming as we move forward. And I don't know the date of that presentation, but I'm sure Linda could reference it. Um, I'm not sure if it was the last school committee meet, business meeting or the business meeting before that, but it has a lot of really helpful information about how the buildings are being used, um, the capacities and what that will look like for September. So it's, I'm not sure what that date was, but that might answer, um, some of the questions. And I do think it's important in moving forward, not just for next year, but looking at the next several years, how are we best and most efficiently using the resources that we have? I, I agree with you.
My opinion is that we're not the most efficient.
So I'll, I just want to jump in as someone who also is sitting on the budget subcommittee. Um, while I won't get into a philosophical debate here right now with, um, and as my fellow people here have, um, we've come to you with a 2% increase to the school budget and have given a plan why. If what we're feeling is that you guys are going to come back with another number, the answer is we'll go back to the budget subcommittee and we'll have to figure it out from there. So I hear your question, so I wanted to give you, it's a pretty clear question. Like if we, if you guys come back to us and say, we're, we're not going with 2%, we're going with whatever. What are you going to do? And we'll just go back to the budget subcommittee and we'll come back with what we'll do. And I know you wanted, you would like to have an answer right now, but we obviously don't have one. Um, but we would come back with one.
Thank you. I, I want us to be careful with the language that we use because we often get these things confused. It's not a 2% increase in the budget. It is a 0.76% increase in the budget. 2% increase in the property tax transfer, which is caused because we're losing state aid. So when we're talking about total dollar amount of spending on the educational program, it's a 0.76% increase.
So I'll just say once more that state aid is still taxpayer dollars. And I get that they're going to spend it anyway. But my point is if we were more efficient and we didn't need a 2% tax transfer, could we have level spending? Could we have maybe reduced spending? And why is that not a good goal?
So I, I have worked with Linda to get to this number. Um, obviously I work for the council and whatever the council's will is, we'll, we'll make sure that we achieve it. That having been said, this is pretty damn close to level funding. Um, with the 700,000 plus off, what's your total, the total reduction this year, 700 and?
State aid?
Yes.
700,000.
700,000.
992.
Okay, so 700,000 off, we're really talking about a $300,000, um, increase here. If we're, if we just say that $700,000 of the additional million that we're giving um, is just to compensate for the aid lost from the state, we're talking about a $300,000 increase, which is really close, on a, on a $54 million program. Damn close to level funded.
I'm not going to dispute that with you, Rob. I agree with you. And Linda, I understand you, this is, this is brand new. Not the whole process, but for you in this seat, it's brand new. I get all that. But if we could solve some of those inefficiencies that I perceive, I, I think I'm right, could there be a reduction in spending and why isn't that a good goal?
So I actually think that Linda and I have had this conversation as well. And I think that there are inefficiencies in this system and the problem with inefficiencies isn't just that it costs money or wastes money. Inefficiencies also degrade the performance of an organization. If you've got too many people tripping all over each other, the work site isn't safe. The work site isn't good. Now, I don't know that that's the problem in the school department, but inefficiencies are bad for human organizations. They're not just bad because they're wasteful, uh, fiscally. Linda, I think recognizes that the program's got to be reviewed from top to bottom for programmatic reasons, not just fiscal reasons.
I think, um, going back a few years, three, the three or four years ago, that was the theme of the, um, conversation we had with the school committee when we approved their budget was about becoming more efficient or looking for ways, uh, to become more efficient because if you're wasting money on something, as an example, there's going to be some child or teacher or a program that's not getting that money. And that's kind of where, I believe, the, um, hiring of a consultant came in to play, which has led us down to this path of doing things with our school buildings or changing them around, et cetera. Um, but I do understand programs are super important and at the end of the day, results are even more important. Just a comment. Jaycee?
Really quick. Um, I don't, I, just a couple of things. Of the fact that the two entities worked so closely together on this budget. The fact that both sides came together and presented this as one group speaks volumes. I don't have to say anything more about that. I think that you're right. There are inefficiencies all over the place. Linda's been here for a minute and she did an amazing job with the support of the people from the town. I'm asking you, I'm asking you to please just give us the 2% this year. Give us this next year to bring back, A, we could save you money. This budget may not come to fruition. There may be savings all over the places. She works on it every day. She's assured you she will. Um, let's see what we come back with next year at, at this same time. To keep saying three, three years ago, four years ago, bringing up the turmoil that was this time last year serves nobody any good. We've turned a page. We've turned a corner. We've taken a different road. However you want to look at it, we've come at this very, very differently. And I think that we're in a good place. The town manager says we're in a good place. The superintendent and the CFO feel good. Zach is relatively new. He feels good about this. Um, Abel, I mean, everybody worked on this together. I just feel like to go back and forth and to try to force our hand and bring back a list of cuts is not gonna, it's not for the greater good. Give us another year, please. Just, that's my, that's my ask.
And respectfully, Jaycee, um, this is a song that we've heard before. I mean, it's an ask that, this is my sixth budget and this is a common ask. I get it. I get it. I, I get it. I just, it's, it's not a new request.
So the only thing I would say, Jaycee, about the collaboration that we've had, I think that we have got a very positive, productive working relationship going. From my perspective, this is a first step toward a better, more efficient, less costly, less costly program. The goal has to be to get to less costly. Now, we've got some good news again. We're at the end and I do think that we're likely to see this sort of bottom out. I don't expect the state to turn around and cut more out of our, our budget next year at the, in the 11th year of the 10-year reduction scheme. It's possible, but I, I'm, I'm hopeful that that's not going to happen. I think we've sort of hit the bottom and so we, we have a place from which we can begin to build. And we've got to start looking at the program on both sides, the municipal side and the school side, and make sure that we can answer the question satisfactorily to the town council this year and in the future years. What we mean by success is, and we're going to measure our success by, and when we hit that, we'll know it because. And if we can't answer those, those questions, if we can't finish those statements for the council, we don't deserve public funding for programs. It's not good enough for us to say, because patients need them, we're going to spend more on the EMS crew. We can't, it's not good enough to say because it's good for this group or that group. Because excellence is what our children deserve is nice. It's a good thing, but it's not enough for us. We're going to have to be more disciplined about what we mean by success and measuring how we, how we achieve it.
I, I do think that it has been outlined very clearly as this budget was built by the superintendent and by the school committee, what measures of success are. And as I said, I just want to reiterate, um, that because I don't think it should end in a conver, in, I don't think the end of the conversation should be that the school committee and the district administration needs to decide what a measurement of success is. It's been discussed throughout the entire process, um, since Linda came here. And again, that's student growth. So looking at are our students learning? Are their outcomes, which are very, they're measurable. Looking at are our students meeting our benchmarks? And that means all of our students. Are our students graduating ready for career and/or tech? Are our students' test scores? Um, no matter what you think about standardized testing, it is a standard of success. Are our test scores increasing? Um, those, they're very measurable and that, and the program is designed around. And that's why Gina is here and Linda is, um, developing, sorry, a pre-K through 12 curriculum for our reading, our math and our health, including social, emotional. I mean, that, that is what this is built around, is looking at how we are meas, at our measurable indicators of student success.
So then the question becomes, how do we get better? And, and we've got to know the program. I mean, everybody's got to know the program. That's true for John Shock. That's true for the, the rec center. That's true for all of our programs. We have to be able to say, this is what we mean by success. It is this score. It is this graduation rate. It is this metric, whatever that is. Kids say they're happy. If that's the metric we're going to use, 80%, 90%, 99.9% of our kids on any given day when we do a survey say they're happy and well-adjusted. They think they are happy and well, if that's our metric, fine. But we've got to know what our metric is and if we're not hitting it, we have to be able to define the program to say, this is how we're going to achieve that outcome.
And I think all that can be done in a much more efficient way and that's what's being worked on. I agree with you a hundred percent. Every, we need to achieve efficiency.
And I have all hope in that. My intent here is not to be confrontational, but now I'm being asked to take my sixth first step. Just one more step. So again, I don't want to be confrontational, but it's reality for me.
The one big change here, we have a totally different variable here and we have a new administrative team. So then that you need to give, well, you don't need to. I think it's important that we give them a chance to evaluate the entire system and to develop what that's.
Emily, I don't disagree with you, but the, the arguments I heard before was, and we're doing a facility study and we'll have less facilities by a date certain and we're still here with the same number of buildings.
That's not true though, Joe. We have, we're not, we're not using South Road School. That's been, since that conversation started, South Road School has been given back.
When I came on the council.
South Road School was being paid for, was in the district's hands until last year. And Hazard School.
You're not going to hang your hat on that, right? You're not going to hang your hat on that on South Road?
You're saying, you're claiming that we have the same number of buildings that we did six years ago and that's not true.
That are, that are what they are?
But what you just said though, it isn't true. You said that six years ago, we have the same amount of buildings as we have now and that, that's.
Hey, we don't have South Road.
And we're also not using.
Employee to student ratios in Mattoonik and Wakefield that are outrageous. It, all I'm, all, the only point I want to make, I don't want to debate facilities use with you. That's your job. You, you guys can figure this out. But the last time we were asked to give this one more, there was this new thing that we were going to have this facility study and we were going to have this program that was going to solve all those inefficiencies. And it hasn't happened. So you're asking me to take the first step again?
So I, I think that the plan is laid out pretty clearly of how that's addressing inefficiencies. So South Road is being taken offline. Hazard School Building is being taken offline. And by closing the high school and putting in addition on Curtis Corner, instead of keeping the high school as is, we're taking about 95,000 square feet offline. That, that's looking at inefficiencies in a bigger way than was looked at ever previously. I mean, I just, I hear your concern. It's a concern of mine as well because I don't think it's sustainable the way it is either. I, I, I agree with you.
So the plan going forward is a different conversation than, than what we're dealing with today. We're here today and we're being asked to take that leap of faith once more. And I, I don't want.
Can't be done tomorrow.
Right, but I don't want to debate the next plan with you because that'll be a longer conversation about why you spend $80 million to solve a problem. So, I mean, that's a different debate.
But even at that, the, the metric here is not agreed. I mean, I, I don't think that we have a consensus. When we say South Road is coming offline, South Road is offline. And really, in fact, has been offline for a number of years. Hazard is not, is not a truly, I mean, when we talk about taking 95,000 square feet off, uh, South Road's off. Hazard is all but off. It, it's not, it's not clear that we've got us an agreed upon metric. Uh, it's not clear that everyone would agree that we are taking 95,000 square feet out of circulation or out of use. South Road is not used today. Hazard is not effectively.
Not included in that 95,000.
Okay.
If you add, if you add hazard, the hazard building square footage and you add the high school square footage and then you look at the proposed square footage for the building, that will be the new high school at Curtis Corner and you subtract those two numbers, that number is around, it's above 90,000. I believe the number was 94 and something changed. I don't, it's around 95,000 square feet. That, that's that number as, that can be found on the RIDE website. It's also found in, um, the plan that's online. So it's not numbers that I'm constructing on my own.
No, it's just a matter of making sure that we define them so that we all know what we're talking about. And that, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate, uh, the facilities are going to be getting more efficient and I appreciate this discussion about efficiencies. Uh, but I think it's worth noting that a 0.76% increase is a representation of finding efficiencies in the backdrop of 2.5% inflation. It's particularly true if you're looking at the built-in increases in wages and benefits that we have to pay to staff, which is probably higher than 2.5%. Um, and I would say, you know, we hold ourselves to high standards in South Kingston, but I don't think there's a whole huge amount of efficiencies out there that we're going to shake loose. This is a town that was run by Steve Alfred for 42 years. Not exactly a guy who's known for spending profligate amounts. So for the past five years, the school budget has increased by 0.9% per year. That's lower than the. So, I, we spend a lot of time talking about it, but we have to realize that for years and years, we've been a very efficient community, and it shows in the statistics about where our tax burden is. I, you could go back to that list of the lowest ten state or ten districts, and I'm willing to bet that most of those other districts down there are getting a lot more money in state aid than we are here in South Kingstown. So, I think we do a very good job of keeping our house in order here, and I appreciate the leadership of Rob and Steve before him. We need to be realistic about what these numbers mean and understand that costs increase over time as inflation increases, and try to judge ourselves realistically.
I just want to clarify, that chart, Rob, is tax rate, not tax burden.
I think we fare even better under tax burden.
Yeah. So, tax rate is, is not a very relevant factor. So Washington County, I've repeated this before, is in the top four percent in the country out of eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-six counties for tax affordability. We are number sixty-six. So, tax burden is the, is the measure.
Try very hard to make sure that we're considering the conditions and circumstances within which we're recommending a budget. For the typical homeowner or household in South Kingstown with a home valued at three-hundred-and-fifty-two, fifty-five thousand dollars, three-hundred and, in that, in that area, this tax increase as proposed would be a hundred-dollar-a-year increase. It's a hundred dollars and three cents, I think. That doesn't seem like a big deal until you start running the average income and you start running the costs that are associated with living in, in the world these days. That hundred dollars can make a big difference for a large, well, I don't know how large, but for a number of our people, the people who live in this town.
And I think the compounding of that hundred dollars is more impactful.
And that's right, and that's why this conversation is really the beginning and has to be the starting point, because that hundred dollars in isolation is potentially painful to somebody who's got to pay a hundred-and-fifty thou- or a hundred-and-fifty dollars for an oil shipment, and they don't have the hundred bucks. That's, that's the kind of challenges that increased costs, increased taxes, increased insurance bills, increased whatever it is, can, can visit upon people. But that hundred dollars, if it's on, is, is going to be on top of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars because we're now paying for the school program, we're, we really are beginning to impact folks in a significant way in the out-years, and we really have to be committed to figuring out how to make the programs less costly.
All right. Any other questions up here? Is there anything else on the agenda that specifically wanted to address?
Discussion of the facilities plan. One of the questions that has come up, and it was addressed on the agenda specifically so that this conversation could happen here tonight, was that the school committee, boy, I want to say back in January now, twenty, on the twenty-eighth of January, I think, weird how dates stick in your head sometimes, had, had a discussion about the bond referendum date, and they had a resolution that they wanted to direct at the council, couldn't direct at the council because of the way the resolution was drafted since we're here. Do you want to ask? The subject of the resolution was the scheduling of the bond referendum for the school facilities project in November. This will come back to the council through the school building committee as well, but the school committee would like, and I don't want to speak for the school committee, but if I understand your, if I understand your resolution correctly, would like to have the bond question put on the ballot in November, on November third.
Kate, you're, Kate and Jacey are on the building committee, but I will just speak from the side, so I think we should hear from them for sure, but we're hoping the, the school committee believes that the bond should be on the November ballot because we'll get greatest representation from our voters. It's a general election year, you're going to have a larger voter turnout. Seems like it would be, or not seems like, research supports that that is an ideal time to have a large bond item like that.
Was it voted on in, in a school committee meeting?
School committee, yeah.
Were all seven members present? It was voted on?
I don't, if all seven members were present.
Seven, was it unanimous?
So I think the confusion came in is that the wording of, from the building committee was that they had to go to the school committee first to instruct the building committee to instruct the town or to suggest, recommend to the town to vote to put it on the November ballot. And so I guess that is what our ask would be. I, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm not sure what the actual agenda item says.
It was unanimous, but I don't know how many people were there.
It was unanimous, but I don't know how many people were there. But if it wasn't six-zero, that.
There was, it was six-zero. It was, it was unanimous vote with the number.
But I don't remember if we had six or seven people, but it was unanimous.
Somebody said there were only six people there, taking your word.
So the, the, the question would then be posed to you if we could, if you could vote on it, to put it on the November ballot?
I'll go first. So my understanding is that the stage-two application will not, you will not have an answer back from that yet. I think, my opinion, it's irresponsible to ask the voters to vote on something that we don't know RIDE's opinion of the plan, and we won't know what RIDE's reimbursement will be of the plan on November third. So I think putting it on November, November third is premature. It's a, it's a big amount of money, and if this plan is not fully vetted, I'm going to go back to the first submittal of the stage-two app, and it coming back from RIDE with, I think, twenty-three pages of, here's why we couldn't process this application. And they may have said it differently, that was my interpretation. And there were some real glaring inaccuracies in, for instance, square footage of the high school in that application. So I don't have a tremendous amount of confidence that the application is, I have confidence it will be better, mostly because I think it probably couldn't be worse. But on November third, the application will be into RIDE, but we don't hear from them, and we don't know, we don't know for sure what the reimbursement will be. So based on those two things alone, I don't know how, I don't know how anybody would make any purchase with that little bit of information. I don't care if you were buying a car or a loaf of bread or, you, you, you just don't have enough information back to ask the voters to make an educated decision. If you really want a general election, I mean, that's two years away, that's not going to happen. So it will have to be a special, in my opinion, because I think for these reasons, it would be totally irresponsible to, to put before the voters something that is that incomplete.
I, I, I take the opposite opinion. I think it's totally irresponsible to put it in a special election. Special elections bring out special interests, we know that. I think that this question can be phrased so it speaks to the contingency of if, you know, the stage-two application is approved as, and, and the bond can be worded, so we are asking for up to a dollar amount. I think there's enough wording that we could put in the bond question to make sure the money isn't spent on anything other than school facilities up to a certain dollar amount. Whether or not RIDE has approved it would become a moot point. We, the stage-two application would be complete at that point. No one would be uneducated about what's in it. Everyone would be able to see what was in it at that point. I just think the more voters who have a chance to weigh in on this, the better, and that's going to happen in the 2020 November election. It's not going to happen in February of 2021. It's just not. I want as many people to weigh in, in on this as possible, and I think we're, we're obligated to put it in a general election question.
So Deb, I do agree with you that the more voters that you can have vote on it absolutely is always better, because this is ultimately their money. I mean, this bond is going to tax people who are not born yet. That's how, that's how they're structured. But here's where I respectfully disagree. There's, you, you just shouldn't be making a decision with this, this small amount of information. And I think it's dangerous to put a placeholder in, because if you put a dollar amount that can be spent up to, I just think that's, I think that's real risky and, and not a good practice when you're representing the taxpayer. We, we can respectfully disagree.
And, and we do, and all of the information will be available to the taxpayer of what the stage-two application entails. All of that will be, will be available. The only question that will not be answered is, does RIDE like the package? Right? So I, I, no one should be uneducated about what the stage-two application says at that point. That will be fully, fully available, fully transparent. It will be a done deal. It won't be like this, we still have time to rework what's being presented. It, it's, it's being presented, a fait accompli, you know, a fait accompli at that point.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Other thoughts on this matter? Any other building committee members want to weigh in?
I will just speak to an email we received today from a taxpayer who feels very strongly that it should go on the November ballot. I've heard from a lot of different people that it is the best time in a general election. I agree with Deb. I think if you don't know what's going on by, by November in regards to the facilities project, you don't want to know, because we're going to hopefully have so much information between now and then that people will be sick of hearing about it, so they should have a pretty good idea of, of what's at stake. We've already said that the bond is only going to be what it's going to be, so then we have to work down from that number, so that isn't going to change one way or the other, so. I don't know, I think.
I think that we can, we can see both sides of the argument. In terms of emails, you know, I, I probably got a similar email that you did, but I've also gotten plenty of emails that are asking for us to postpone it. I think people's concerns are that we would be opening up like a checkbook in a way, that, you know, it could be spent differently. I think, I, I agree with Deb's comment regarding, at that point, we will know what the application looks like. The only thing we're not going to know is whether or not RIDE has approved it. I think the other unknown that we have to be honest about is that the goal is to get the fifty percent reimbursement, and that's probably going to work, but there's no, I can't like say that I'm going to absolutely guarantee that. I do see it happening. So I guess there's still some unanswered questions, you know, or uneasiness, and, and I think, in my opinion, what's been driving some of this lately is the fact that a lot of the emails I've been getting, and these are people that I've never actually talked to before, that were at the visioning of the high school. I, I think there are people that are concerned that we're going to leave the Columbia Street location. Granted, maybe they weren't involved in the very beginning, but now that this is becoming a possibility, I think more people are paying attention and concerned with that. I think some people are concerned with the way that we're thinking about getting around with the new law back in, was it eighty-one, Rob?
I don't recall.
Okay, but the law that changed that said that you, I think it's only thirty years or something like that, where if you were to give a gift, I'm talking about the high school as an example.
Oh, oh, yeah, I understand. I, you lost me in that.
Sorry.
Yeah, so since nineteen eighty-one, in nineteen eighty-one, the state legislature enacted legislation that said very old restrictions on deeds are voided. They're completely voided. It's not that they're voidable, they are voided as a matter of law. So the Maori will that transferred ownership of the land to South Kingstown for the construction and maintenance of a high school was more than thirty years old when the legislation was enacted, and was voided upon passage of that state legislation. There's been some discussion in the community about a desire to honor the Maori request even, or the Maori restriction, even though the law voided that restriction. And I actually have some concerns about that. I certainly don't have the legal authority to act as if an act of the state legislature didn't void that provision. It's not that I can respect Mrs. Maori's wish, because I think it was a nice idea, and it was. I mean, the covenant was that the land was given to South Kingstown for use as a high school, for so long as, as they continued to use it as a high school, they could enjoy it. If they ever decided not to use it as a high school, then it would go to the Wakefield Trust, which has subsequently been acquired by Bank of America, and that the Wakefield Trust would sell the, the property and use the proceeds of the sale to establish scholarships for students in South Kingstown. It was a very nice gift. But the legislature voided it, and I can't, I don't have the legal authority to say, I'm going to just pretend that that act of the legislature didn't happen and honor the wish anyway. If we tried to give the building to the Bank of America, anybody who wanted it could cry foul, for I didn't follow the disposal, the contracting rules that I'm bound to foul. I have to go out to bid and solicit proposals, I have a fiduciary duty to make sure that we go out and find the best deal for South Kingstown. I don't have the legal authority to say, I'm going to pretend as if the Maori provision is still real or still live. The state legislature told me it's not, and it's beyond my capacity, it's beyond my legal authority to pretend that that didn't happen. Is that what you were getting at?
Correct.
Sorry.
So, there's definitely people, I think, that are concerned about, you know, it's not necessarily whether or not we're going to use that high school or not, but what happens to the proceeds from the sale of that property. Some people feel that it should be used as it was intended, but we talked about the differences in that in terms of the law, et cetera. I think that, I can see Joe's point, I can see Deb's point, and I think it's a difficult spot for us to be in in some regards, because we want to make sure that people have all of the information so that they can vote educatedly. You know, I, I think sometimes people, you look at bonds, you're not that, you don't really research them, you know, you might be going there to vote for one particular thing, and it sounds good, but I, I do think it's fair to at least get as much information out there as possible if we do decide to go with the November date. The one thing I can tell you is that as the chair of the committee, you know, the charge of the committee is to take what the school committee wants and to try to make that happen. And as the chair, that's my goal, and I, and I think I've been doing a pretty good job at it, hopefully. You know, but when I put my town council hat on, I start thinking a little bit differently. So like I said, I see where Deb is coming from, and that's definitely the direction that I think that the school building committee is going in, but I can see the concerns that Joe and maybe other people might have regarding that. And, and I think that if the council is going to make the decision on whether or not to put it on the ballot for November, I think they need to be well-informed of what's going on, et cetera. So maybe that would entail, you know, a separate meeting or something with the school building committee. building committee to discuss that, so that we're all on the same page and understand where we're coming from. Sure.
I just want to clarify the reimbursement rate. So we won't know that our reimbursement is 50% until sections of Stage Four, which is the construction phase, as they are completed. That's when we'll get our reimbursement rate. We won't know that when RIDE comes back with their decision in November. That's not part of what they're going to say to us in November. They're going to say to us whether we can proceed to Stage Three or not. That's what November's decision is going to be. We're not going to know the 50% until the construction phase, which is Phase Four of the facilities plan. It will be submitted in sections, in chunks to RIDE, did we meet these criteria with this? That's when we'll get our reimbursement rate. Nothing will be guaranteed until construction, completion of construction.
RIDE is willing to tell you that you look like you're going to be eligible, that this project looks right, but they don't guarantee that you're going to get the reimbursement until the work is done and they can show, you can demonstrate to them that you've achieved the metrics of success for that provision. So if you are going to put solar panels on, they'll say, great, you're going to be eligible if you do the project with solar panels for the energy efficiency piece of the program. They wait until the solar panels are on the roof, they go out, they make sure they're hooked up, and they say, oh yeah, you qualify.
But at some point before then, they're telling you the rate?
No.
No. They're not going to tell you the rate, they're going to, they will give you some indication of whether what you're proposing fits within the program parameters, but whether you hit the parameters can't be determined until you've hit the parameters.
Up till this point, they've told us that what we are proposing at the moment, what they see in what we've discussed with them is that we're getting up to 50%.
Possibility.
Right. And I'm not saying guarantee.
We're going to get 35.
I'm just saying, you were going to get 35.
We're going to get 35.
What the proposal says is that, to Rob's point, if you do X, Y, Z, they look at it and they say, okay, you've done X, Y, Z. But we also can't move forward without bond approval out of going forward. So everybody's in that same vote, right?
Understood. But the bond that we're planning on is counting on a 50%.
Well, it's counting on 15, really, Joe. We're going to get 35.
It's counting on that over 15.
That's guaranteed. That's our reimbursement rate from the state. So we've got 15% that this Stage Two application is going to speak to, right? Is we're going to try to hit the benchmarks. But we won't know about that 50% until construction. So November doesn't really factor into the, all the information on the reimbursement rate because it's going to be four more years before we know that 15% above the 35 has been returned to this community.
The other thing I do think is worth noting, sorry, Joe, I didn't know you were going to...
No, that's all right.
The other thing that I think is worth noting is that this is not the first time that projects have moved along in this time sequence. Other districts in the state have gone to bond approval before having RIDE approval, and it was because they had very clear conversations with RIDE about what the project was, what the comfort level was from RIDE with that project, and what their chances were, or what their, you know, what reimbursement rate they were going to get for the bonus points. And from my, I'm not on the building committee, but from following it, the conversations that I've heard between RIDE and the building committee and what the superintendent has brought forward from her conversations is that they feel very confident that this is a up to 50% plan. So we're not the first district that has gone to bond before having approval, and I think the other people, the other districts that have done it, from my understanding, is because the statistics are so clear about where you're going to get the largest number of voters, and that's a general election.
So just in response to that, because other districts have done it, doesn't make it a good practice for us. But 15% at risk of $80 million is a lot of money. We're not, I don't see us planning anywhere near for that.
Maybe...
But it is what it is.
Maybe...
Right, yeah.
So it was a good suggestion earlier to maybe have the, if you would, consider a meeting with the building committee, have the town council meet with the building committee, and then we could also ask Christine Lopes Metcalf from Department of Education, who oversees all of this, to come to the meeting. And then I think we can have a conversation and make sure that we clearly understand where we stand.
I think Deb and Emily and Rob clearly understand. I don't think I need that meeting. There's a lot of risk here. So...
What kind of timeframe are we with, with the legislature? What do we have to get to the state?
I was planning to come to the council with a request for legislation for the municipal bond at the next council meeting. You don't need to do them at the same time, and I'm happy to be disabused of that notion as well, but I was thinking we ought to be moving on this fairly quickly.
I just didn't know if we had a, do you have a sense of time in the general assembly? What, so, you know, I don't want to...
They're pretty good about dealing with municipal questions even late in the season. Yeah, that's true.
Sometimes.
I think we're better off getting requests of this type to the legislature sooner rather than later.
Their season ends in June, right, for this?
Yes, that's right. Season, right. So, I mean, I'd like to get the municipal bond question resolved. If we're going to go forward with that, I'd like to get a request to the state legislature sooner. And, you know, again, depending on the council's view of this, it may make sense to just put them both in at the same time.
So with, when RIDE, even if, so say RIDE approved Stage Two prior to November, even, or say we do a general election in February and RIDE does approve us, again, we're not going to know, we have to get the bond voted on prior to moving forward regardless. So that, I mean, the way I'm looking at it as a school committee member, as a building committee member, and then also as a constituent who's going to also potentially have to pay the bill, I want as many people as humanly possible to vote on whether they want to give us $85 million extra.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. That's not the part I have a problem with.
And so that's kind of why I personally would like to see it, but I'm, you know, obviously speaking for myself.
Right, and if the bond doesn't pass at that point, then you start over.
Yes, we do.
So the other element is that the RIDE regulations have a time limit. Your referendum on bond approval has to be within six months of the approval given by the state education commission. So if they do that in November, in the third week in November, you only have until the spring to act. So it has to be in that period. We couldn't wait for a full year or two years. We'd have to go. The other thing to keep in mind is that right now, the escalation costs on construction are roughly 6% per year. So every six months delay on an $80 million project is costing us significant, significant money.
And I think the other thing to mention is that right now, bond rates are at historically low levels. Right? Not that that's the reason to borrow the money, but if we can get enough information to the public...
Yeah. We've been told by our financial advisor, we're going to go out for, to the market, if the council approves this, we're going to go out to market for the $4 million on the school improvements, the roofs and the security vestibules, hopefully this month. It's already this month, huh? This month, and our financial advisor is telling us, you know, they're seeing communities similarly situated come in with lower than 3% interest rates on their bonds. When you're looking at escalation of six and interest rates of 275...
So I want to hear more discussion, I suppose, on whether we need to have a presentation come into the council before we can make a decision on this question, or not?
I can imagine Bryant and I need that because we're, you know, we're there every week, but you guys would have to...
Joe has said he doesn't need a presentation. What do you think?
Just to clarify, March 9th, Monday, will be when this comes to the council for us to vote on, is that correct?
I would take the guidance, take guidance from the council if it's your...
I would suggest, yeah.
If you'd like to see something on, I'm happy to do it.
Comes to us the next meeting. Yep. I don't feel necessary that we need a presentation for the building committee. We have good access to Bryant and Deb, who serve as the chair and co-chair. You know, I could ask some questions whenever I need, and they've been giving great response whenever I ask, so I feel like I have a, you know, good understanding up to this point. So I don't believe it's necessary.
All right, and you guys serve on the committee side soon, and you have a pretty All right, any other discussion on this bonding scheduling item? Okay. I think that brings us to the end of the agenda items as they were laid out. Sorry. Then there's other matters of interest and concern. Are you going somewhere, Rob?
Yeah, if you can pull the podium.
Okay, yes. Please do that. So as the podium is made ready, if anybody would like to say anything about budget presentation tonight, or any of the items we discussed, feel free to come up here, speak your name for the record. Yeah, there might be a loud noise in a second.
Ready? Ooh, nothing. Wow.
It didn't get plugged in yet. Not bad at all.
I guess, since you're talking about the bond, what are we going to ask the legislature for? What is it going to be for? Or what?
To place the ballot question in November for $85 million. The wording, would it be part of this?
So I'm going to actually have Zach provide you a little bit more background here because it's an $85 million project. RIDE requires some pay-go money, and it's a complicated story beyond that.
So as part of the process, it would be $85 million for the project. RIDE would require up $6 million as pay-go over the life of the project. That would be subject also to reimbursement, but we would actually bond about $78 million. The requirements by statute, you have to go to the legislature to ask them to get a referendum, to put it on the ballot. That's your first step would be...
But there's no description of the project at all?
So, correct. The referendum can be as detailed, and it will be framed as detailed as we need it to be with the project. Typically, there, you see, every city and town is different, how they put them out. We've talked with bond council, and we would frame it so that it would be descriptive, so that people know what you're getting for $85 million.
Like new school facilities for the town of South Kingstown?
I don't think it would be that vague.
Okay, but I mean, you're not going to be specific, right? Like, you're not going to tell all the work and all that stuff, right? I mean, you're not going to...
You're not going to get down to the...
I get the impression here that, so has a decision been made? Are we moving the high school to Curtis Corner? Huh? No?
No. It certainly seemed, this was like a deja vu of the high school the other day.
Gary, so you know, we, when we were looking at, I mean, you serve on the building committee, you just don't have a vote, right? So you're there, very engaged, and so I know you're knowledgeable. You know, when we were looking at Columbia Street, that we had the same dollar amount attached to the facilities program as we do with Curtis, moving this high school from Columbia Street to Curtis Corner.
Not the original plan, that's not the case. It was, I believe, $30 million going to the high school on Columbia Street, the original plan.
I'm talking from the first, the Stage Two application that we submitted
Okay.
in February, that did not, that came back asking us to rework many sections, right? That dollar amount has not changed.
Okay.
The dollars that were allocated for the high school are now being allocated towards Curtis Corner instead.
Okay.
So the dollar amount remains static.
Okay, so it's being allocated towards Curtis Corner, so the decision's been made?
We have not approved that yet as a building committee, and you know that. We've asked RGB to come and show us a detailed plan, right? We just talked about that. They came back with this level and said, we think we can do Curtis Corner for the same dollar amount range as we were looking at Columbia Street. We have not seen the real numbers yet, and I will tell you that if the real numbers come back where the project at Curtis Corner is greatly diminished from Columbia Street, I will not, I probably won't be in favor of a wildly diminished Curtis Corner as opposed to an 80% renovation of the high school. I want that, my goal is to make the dollars do the best they can. But we haven't seen that yet.
Okay, but what does that mean, though?
What does what mean?
Well, you won't be in favor of it.
I would probably say, I think we need to go back to Columbia Street.
Okay, so no impact on the bond?
Right now, we don't know what that looks like. But I'm one of 13, right? That's my opinion.
Right.
Is I want the dollars that are being allocated to the renovation of the high school, a high school, to do the best, the best they can for us.
Okay, and so do I. But the point that I'm trying to make, though, is the fact that we're going to put a bond on for November.
We are.
And you all feel, let me finish. You all feel that, for some reason, people are disenfranchised in a special election. There's, you know, everyone that votes in November has the right to vote in a special election.
Correct.
Nobody's disenfranchised. If you have 5,000 people come out in November, 5,000 people can come out, why won't, why won't they come out?
Because...
Why? Why won't they come out?
Because you know other factors drive general elections.
Well, that will drive more people out.
The presidential election drives more than the off-year, right? That's just a fact.
Yes, it is.
Why don't they come out?
Yes, it does, and that's my concern. There's a lot of noise going to be going around on the presidential election, and people are going to be going into the voting booth and have no idea what this school bond is for. And they're not, they're just going to vote yes or no, and most people, as you know, in Rhode Island, vote yes, okay? They're going to vote yes or no. That's why you want it in November, let's be honest.
I want it because I don't want...
A special election...
Anytime, some people to come back and say, such a small, only 10% of the people came out for the special election, so only 10%, you know, I don't want that.
We used to have, we used to have very small amounts of people come to the financial town meeting, too. And we did 60, you know, 40, 50 million budget for people in the high school auditorium that didn't have many people either. The point I'm trying to make is that people come out in a special election because they care, and no one is disenfranchised. Anybody that comes out in the general election can certainly come out in a special election. But here's one other thing I think you should think about, because you're going to put a bond out there for $80 million, $85 million. I mean, do you have short memories? I mean, two years ago, we had a plan, and what happened? It was an election, and guess what? November, you may all not be there, some of you may not be there, because you're up for election. So the bond passes, and the new people that come in decide they don't want this plan. They got a, they got a $80 million, they got an $80 million school facility plan that's passed. It's passed. And so now, it's sitting out there, and guess what? The school committee now, the new school committee says, we're going to do this with the plan, and I don't know, you have to do it, don't you? I mean, it's their bond, don't you have to issue the bond if...
So one of your earlier questions was, how much detail is there in the bond question? And that's a question that the council and bond council is going to have to answer. But you can tie a bond question to a dollar amount. So $62 million for renovations to a high school, $15 million for renovations to the Broad Rock Middle School, $4 million, you can do that. That's perfectly fine. If specificity about the location is... If specificity about the location is necessary, you can do that. You know, $62 million for renovation to the building located at 302 Curtis Corner? Whatever the address is, you can do that as well. And once that authorization is in place, then the government has the authority, has what it needs to go ahead and proceed. That doesn't mean that the government would have to proceed. So if we got a bond referendum passed for $78 million and RIDE decides, or the education commission decides they're not going to approve the stage two again, or they've got major changes to it so that it doesn't meet the intent of the voters, the government could walk away from that. They could simply say, "We've got the authority. We're not gonna use the authority. Sorry voters to make you have spent your time reading that long question."
Gary, the new council could say, "We don't want you to put the bonds out there." So the question comes back to the council. Even though it's been voted on by the, approved by the voters, we've got $4 million, right? The council could say, "No."
Councils change.
That's what I'm saying to you. If the council changes and they don't like the project, right?
Right.
They can say no to issuing the bonds.
But the bond is still out there. Councils change in another two years. We're doing bonds now that have been approved years ago. We go to market with bonds that have been approved 10 years ago.
But the council has the ability to stop that if we didn't like it, right?
All I'm saying Deb is that we're asking for trouble. Why wouldn't we wait until we, after the election in November? The council is the council that is elected. The school committee is the school committee that is elected. You now both agree in a special election to move forward with the bond and at the same time, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about the participation because anybody that participates in November can participate then. There's no reason why they can't. But now there's, we have a surety, the taxpayers have a surety that the government is behind what they're asking us to do. Right now, I just don't believe that, you can assure us that that's the case. The other thing I want to talk about is the budget. Because it's been said here that over the last several years, that the school budget has been below inflation and year after year after year, they've done well. And I won't dispute that, other than to say that it's like saying to me that I have a car that gets 20 miles a gallon and I spend $1,000 a year. And then the next year it gets 23 miles a gallon and I spend $1,000 a year. Or I spend $1,200. And then it gets 25 and as the years go by, I'm up to 30 miles a gallon. But I'm spending more than I did when it was, when it was 20 and the price hasn't gone up. Why am I doing that? Because the fact of the matter is, is that we're having decreasing population. It's hard to say that the schools are efficient when the number of students go down every year. So, you know, when we operate the way we're doing it. See, I was here in the 90s, sitting in your seat when the schools were increasing in population. And I used to sit there and say, "Well, how come the budget's going up?" And they'd say, "Well, we got 18 new students." I said, "Well, it's only 18 new students. That's not even one teacher." And they would say, "Oh, no, that's not the case. It's the way they fall in the classrooms. It's the way they fall in the sections." One section may, one student may take a section where we need a new student. And then in another grade, another, so we need X amount of new teachers. Well, same thing is applying now, only in reverse. And we're not getting, we're not reducing staff. Why? Because of the way they fall in the sections. Well, how do we eliminate that? One of the reasons is we have to make our buildings more efficient. We're operating two elementary schools, half full. You know, when my daughter went to Wakefield Elementary School, they had 359 kids in it. We have 144 today. Probably 130 or 120 something next year. So when you say we're efficient and it's only 2%, I just don't think taxpayers buy it. I just think that we have to, have to look at how we're doing things. And we depend on you. You guys, you run the school system and you run the programs and we want it. We want you to do the best job you can with the money you have. But we depend on you people over here to make it, to really force them to be as efficient as they can. We don't want you to argue with them or have confrontations with them. But we just want you to know, we want you to ask them to be as efficient as they possibly can. They're not, it's not happening. You know, when they say that they're gonna redistrict and close, or not close a school, but they're gonna move the kids around in two or three years. Well, why don't we give you more money in two or three years? In the next two or three years, we'll just give you a level funding. I don't think you'd like that, but we don't like that. We have to keep paying for half-empty schools. So I guess the question is, is how do we get, how do we get around that? I think that the way we get around that is to have an honest discussion about where this money is really being spent. And that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Hi, Carol Jurzak. I felt I needed to get up right after Gary because my thoughts are following right along the same lines as he has. Again, it's going to the inefficiencies in the money being spent. And it seems when the school committee hears that, they right away say, "We're gonna cut excellence." And the programs are gonna suffer. We're gonna cut excellence if the amount of money is cut. And yet everybody agrees, we have a glaring amount of inefficiencies here. I've heard it here, here, here and over here. The high student to staff ratio and the cost per pupil are like red flags saying, "We are totally inefficient." Totally is hard. We're inefficient. So to then still ask for another 2%, it's, maybe we need to stop granting more, even if it is 2%, to force the efficiencies to come into play. Say there's a, it works out to the 59 students we're losing this year. It could be four students a grade. Well, if that grade has 12 kids in the classroom, I'd say that loss of four kids means a classroom has to be cut. And this is not the only year where we have lost students. From what I've been able to throw together here, there's been about a 12% drop in students since 2013. We're talking a little over 400 kids. How many classrooms were cut for those 400 kids? We can't talk about just the 59 kids. How about the 400 kids? I mean, the elephant in the room here that's just been brought out session after session after session is, "Why the heck do we have four elementary schools? There shouldn't be a classroom with 12 kids in it. Those classrooms should already be consolidated to have the number of students in that classroom that is in every teacher's contract. Why are we having classrooms with 12 kids in it? And ask for, oh, we're being very generous. We only want two extra percent." It doesn't fly together. That doesn't work. We're very inefficient and to me, there are obvious, easy ways to fix the inefficiencies and we're not willing to go there. So I think that 2% should be very much in question. And we shouldn't be so pleased and happy that they only ask for 2%. Seems common sense. So think about it. It's not 59 kids. It's been over 400 kids with no reduction in classrooms. That's unconscionable. It's not fair to the taxpayers of this town. And it doesn't mean a cut in excellence. It means a cut in inefficiency. Two very different things.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Hill. I'm a parent, taxpayer. I volunteer on the wellness committee for the district. I have a very different take on this. I have not been involved in the building committee meetings or any of those things. I'm just looking at this from a different perspective in terms of thinking about the discussion that happened earlier around efficiencies and things, different things that we can look at and different parts of the discussion that I don't think has been considered. And if it has, you can tell me I'm completely wrong and I'm perfectly willing to accept that. In doing that, I'm gonna go backwards a few years. I've lived in and around the town since 1993. When I first came to URI, I kinda never left and I think that's a situation for a lot of people. But when I heard the 59 student decrease for next year, I think part of what I'm gonna say might explain some of that. So in October of 2018, both of the two charter schools in our town were actively, but quietly, working through our technical review committee, our town planning committee, the town zoning committee to expand their footprint in South Kingstown and increase the number of enrolled students in their programs by over 100 students within the town. One was originally intended to be a K-8 charter school, but in 2015, they petitioned RIDE to change their status to K-5 to try and line up with area schools. They wanted to keep their enrollment at 260 students, which is essentially a whole school within the district. At the same time, another charter school, Green, petitioned to have moved from 210 to 400 students. At the time, the one, the first school, Kingston, was stuck at 180 because they were on well water. They weren't on town water. They had to do a number of things, including putting a water tank in, which they did. And to my knowledge, they didn't actually go to the town to do that. They asked permission later. Compass was seeking to go to 220 students and increase from 197 students. They currently have 197 students. There were issues around septic capacity. Again, they didn't, felt they didn't need permits. They would go and just increase things. And then later, after they got a fine, retroactively worked on those things. And during November of, November 7th, 2018, the building committee at Kingston Hill had a discussion with RGB around the plans for a full kitchen in their school. At that time, the costs of which they weren't willing to pay for. During November 21st, meeting for the building committee, after discussing the plans with Jack Jones from Chartwells, they then discussed using warming kitchens. From that point, there were no further discussions around the full kitchen costs due to water and septic issues. The consultant they were working with, which worked for the town at one time, was sister of the school principal and was assured a number of things, which probably aren't pertinent to this, but definitely affect the two schools up in that area, including towns for the plan to put a park up there and a water tower and a whole number of things that they were gonna be guaranteed access to within that area. But I think that in looking at this, how does that fit in the comprehensive plan for our town? And I don't know that the comprehensive plan takes into account those two schools and how the impact of those two schools and increasing the capacity within those schools affects the schools within this district and affects the taxpayers in our district when we think about expansion within our district, because where do they draw from? They're drawing from the students in this district. Yes, they're coming from other towns, but they want students from these towns. And I don't want to say that we should deny residents of our town the opportunity to attend those schools. They should have the opportunity to do that. But I also think that we should be thinking about the schools within our district that we're also supporting. Right now, as of October 2019, there were 240 students in Kingston Hill. So they've increased 50 students since 2018. 50 students with room to expand 20 more. The expansion to go up a total of 70 students since 2018 is considerable. They would prefer students from districts like South Kingstown, near Gansett, North Kingstown, because they pay more. It's much higher costs. Our budget reflects $1.186 million as paid to charter schools. That's a real, that's a lot of money that's going out of the district to pay for schools that we have no control over. So the per pupil cost for Kingston Hill is $15,790. The per pupil cost for Compass is $15,517. And our per pupil cost, I believe, is $19,997. That's a big difference within this town. In October of 2019, I asked the Kingston Hill Board of Trustees minutes reflects a discussion on their lunch contract, which they indicated they had a contract with South Kingstown Public Schools, where Chartwells brings food to Kingston Hill from their kitchen. I'm not certain which school district kitchen that comes from. So Chartwells hires and assumes the risk of the lunch aid, which costs them $10,000 for three hours a day for the school year and then RIDE reimburses a third of the costs. They were happy to pass that. Why? Because they don't have to have their own kitchen. Because they looked at this in 2018 and said, "It's cheaper for us not to have our own kitchen and have South Kingstown make our food for us." Why are we doing that? Why are we shooting ourselves in the foot and saying, "We're gonna support places that are gonna take students out of our schools and go there and we're gonna pay for our food to go there too?" Are we calculating the cost of what it means for our kitchens to be in use? For our gas, our water, our services, our mechanical things? For someone to make food and then bring it somewhere else, not to the benefit of our students? What are we getting in return for that? I don't know. Do you know? Anyone? How much? $10,000. Right, so $1.186 million goes out, $10,000 comes in. I know I'm just generalizing, but hopefully you see what I'm, the point I'm trying to make. So for me, it just seems like when we talk about efficiencies and we're looking at places to save money and things that we're doing, you know, as a town, this sale-through planning, sale-through zoning, no one, I tried to bring it up, but no one kinda batted an eye. They just said, "Oh, yeah, yeah." But when you're talking over 100 students in a year, that makes a big impact on the number of kids that are leaving our school district, going somewhere else. That money is leaving our district, going somewhere else. And now we're sitting here saying, "We have to raise 2% more to pay for things that are out of our control." But we're shooting ourselves in the foot when we quickly make decisions and allow other things to happen within our town and we don't pay attention to what those things are gonna happen later on down the line from those decisions. So the one conclusion that I can draw from this is that as a taxpayer, you know, I'm concerned about subsidizing other school districts' meals. And so if we're looking at efficiencies, why are we doing that? Why are we subjecting our equipment, our things like that? Why are we thinking about contracts and things like that that are not gonna benefit us? I would rather lose the $10,000 we bring in than to lose the $20,000 for one student going out. If that's just one student. If we're talking 59 students, it's a lot more money. So, thank you.
Rob, did you wanna talk about the charter schools? I mean, from my understanding, or Linda might be able to better speak to it.
Just very quickly on the municipal side's ability to restrict land use. We can't discriminate in our enforcement of zoning regulations based on desire to maintain a preference for a government program. We'd be sued and successfully sued because if we were trying to maintain a government monopoly and were arbitrarily or desperately enforcing regulations or slowing the issuance of permits that someone's entitled to, we'd get ourselves into a whole lot of hot water very quickly. So we've been asked in the past, "Why did you permit this?" The answer is because they're legally entitled to the permits. It's a use that's not prohibited and if it's a use that's permitted, allowed under law, that's really the end of the analysis. If we were to delay the issuance of permits, we'd be, we'd be in the wrong. It's not proper for the government to slow the issuance of a permit because we don't like the applicant or we feel like the applicant's competing with our enterprise. We have to be even-handed in the administration of the land use regulations. It's unfortunate, but the state drives the charter school program and so long as it's allowed and so long as the use is permitted, we're sort of stuck there. On the question of the state programs and why we're doing kitchen stuff, that's not me.
So the contract for that is annual? It was actually our-
It was actually our last school committee meeting that it was discussed, and we said that we would be looking at the next, later this spring, we would be looking at that contract again to reconsider that $10,000 revenue and if it really was something that we thought we would be supporting moving forward. Thank you.
I mean, I think many of us are probably sympathetic to concerns about charter school. Unfortunately, those concerns really need to be addressed by the General Assembly. Are there other comments from the public?
Hi, Roland Benjamin. I want to just, you've seen my letter. I want to reiterate how dangerous I think this parallel application is before we're going to have any kind of indication. I don't think it's a 15% delta. I think it's, if we had voted on a November bond prior to this other stage two, we would now have an $80 million bond with unfettered potential use in the future. That's what concerns me. That's, I, I talked about that. We talk about language that might restrict it, and I think, I want to go back to, I raised a few points in what I did, but we saw another example of this today. Years ago, 10, 15 years ago, when I first moved into town, there was a financial town meeting. It was a very, you can see it in other communities, but it was a different way to manage this budget. It did allow for direct engagement on every part of the budget, budget in as many places as possible. And then it lost its, its luster a little bit, and people wanted it to change. So a charter commission comes in and made up of community members to rewrite the budget process. And there was, this was controversial, but it was very deliberative in what the outcome was, and you can see it right in our charter. Today, we don't, we don't have the budget that's prepared, that was due on or before March 1st. It wasn't available to anybody. I don't know that it was available to you, but it's very explicit language that isn't just an accident that showed up in the charter. It was a result of a contentious thing that happened 15 years ago, that a community came together and deliberated on, and we just missed it, and I didn't hear a peep about it. So when we talk about an $85 million bond that might have some of these big, big jumps and swings in it, I'm alarmed, more than I was when I even wrote the letter. And I want to talk about the budget, especially with the, the school committee here. I want to say that I just, I don't feel the, the kind of fiscal seriousness I think we need to have. I've served with three, three of you, and I know that you guys are driven towards academic excellence in our schools. I don't have any doubt about that. And even, JC, I don't know, I didn't serve with you, but I expect the same from you. I see you at many, many meetings. And I see you at building committee meetings, and you're putting these efforts in. But I don't see your chair and your vice chair here again. I don't see another member here that's over 10 meetings missed. From a taxpayer's standpoint, these are the most important meetings of the year, these, these joint sessions with the school committee that we're asking, especially in this one, we're asking for $90 million above and beyond the 65 we're asking for, for next year's spending. It reflects on the committee. As you know, the chair and vice chair serve at your pleasure. Any one of you can put a, put an organization discussion up as an agenda item. When you come to the, to this room, to these meetings, and they're missing, I, I notice it. If it was one meeting or not, it might, it would go unnoticed. But you'll remember in 2017, when Maureen Cotter, who was the vice chair at the time, missed three meetings. And you'll remember some of that that ended up in the paper, the types of letters that were coming out from the community. We're now at over 10 in some cases. So when we come asking for 90 million and 65 million, I want to say, we're spending $23,000 a kid. We can talk about the details of an education program a lot, but if we can pull out things like the special needs budgets and the number of kids that have 504s, you're still at a huge number. And these are the numbers that I, I just want to see some more seriousness about. Thanks.
My name's Kevin Sullivan. I'm a taxpayer. And so I haven't been involved personally in any of the committees or whatnot. I would just say that I spent my life, my working career, almost 40 years as a government construction contractor and contract administrator, program administrator, primarily Corps of Engineers. And so I know a little bit about that stuff, and I haven't delved into the details of this planned facility improvement. Not really, because I didn't want to, but I've never, there appears to be no details to delve into, frankly. So some of the early conversation, I admit, I got in here late, about 7:45, so I don't know what was talked about in the first hour and 15, but when I got here, it was a repeat of conversations I've heard every time I've come around. And since it tied into some of the frustrations I expressed to other citizens and taxpayers in this town, and I'm not one, I'm not a social media, I don't do that, and I choose whom I share my thoughts with. That may change here, but I'm going to read you guys something that I sent in mid-February. And it says, it was in reference to something I'd read in the local, local papers, local It was in Westerly, it was in our Narragansett Times. So this is what I wrote. "School district administrators, the CFO and superintendent, the school committee budget subcommittee, the town manager, and the Curtis Corner Middle School principal," these people were all paraphrasing quoted. I said, "It seems to me that a high-priced collection of intelligent, educated individuals like this should be able to come up with the solution to a basic math exercise." And I excerpted, I linked to an article in Rhode Island Central and a couple others. And this is the excerpt. Quote, "One thing the district will not be able to provide Collins with," and I don't know who Collins is, "is a breakdown of per pupil costs. Although there's been much discussion of this, the most current official numbers the Rhode Island Department of Education has are from two years ago. While the district can attempt to break down these numbers, these numbers would not be official, difficult to compare to other districts. Afraid to kind of skew them," she said, I don't know who she was. "While I get that it's two years old, at least it's official. Also in favor of this approach, not wanting to, not wanting the district to speak to a number that you can't justify or defend." And I can't read the next line that I wrote here, but following that, I said to the people I were communicating with, "These are the folks charged with educating South Kingstown's shrinking student population?" Question mark. And then I said, "I attended one of this subcommittee's meetings beginning of January. The major takeaway I got is that their consensus, that the problem of declining enrollment at South Kingstown High School, wherever else, is a result of poor marketing of a marvelous curriculum that's offered. I heard repeatedly, 'If we do a better job of marketing what we have, we'll stem the tithes. High school students eager to go to surrounding towns' programs.'" I can't say what I described that as, but it's, it's truly an attempt to put lipstick on a pig. I was biting my tongue in this committee meeting so that I wouldn't offer the suggestion that maybe a comparison of the other towns' programs to what we offer might be in order, that it might not be a marketing issue that you can't sell a substandard or sub-quality product. Now, I don't know that's the case. I have no children here. I'm trying to get out of South Kingstown and not pay taxpayers, and I can't convince my wife yet. So until I do, you know, I, I'm not happy with the cost per student, the absolutely unconscionable idea of putting an 80 or 90 million dollar bond in front of the taxpayers and not having a freaking clue what it is you're going to get for, right? So that attitude kind of led into the first things I heard here tonight. And the first things I heard here tonight were, are, school committee members mentioned metrics for success. The ones I heard were increase enrollment, wait for the governor's and the state education commissioner's new curriculum to come out, enhance social, emotional learning. I don't know what that is, but I did not hear any mention of any concrete ideas or concerns of improving the quality and the results or educational improvements that we see declining performance, and I'll blame it South Kingstown, across, across the state. I think our education system has failed our students. And, you know, I know I'm old-fashioned, but a little reading, writing, and arithmetic wouldn't hurt anyone. You know, then there was an extended argument about total square footage now versus years ago, and more inconsequential arguments, statements regarding semantics of efficiencies rate of property tax transfer ask, tax rate increase versus actual. And then the town manager talked about discrete nominal increases, like 100 bucks. What's 100 bucks? And he did admit to the fact that maybe that's the amount of money to people. But I think you guys, and the state is doing it, you're missing the point, in my opinion. Rhode Islanders and South Kingstown taxpayers are sick and tired of the constant nickel and dime. It's not the nickel and dime, it's the constant nickel and dime, highlighted by these sporadic exorbitant big tax and fee increases we see every time some government entity makes a mistake and we got to cover it up, right? There's an exodus, you know? Some people admit to it, some people don't buy it. I think that is part of why the school student population around here is shrinking. I think it's, I know it's why there is a financial and intelligence drain out of Rhode Island, and those that want to be taken care of are attracted here. You know, that's not the be-all and end-all of it, but I don't think there's any, I see no evidence of any thoughts in those range, in those directions, right? And, and these, this type of exodus, you claim your goal is to attract students. The effect of that is to drive people away, and it's, it's the exact opposite of what you claim to want, is increased enrollment so you can justify increased budgets. So now there's a discussion, I guess, of a school committee resolution to put a general obligation bond on a November ballot at the tune of 80 or 90 million dollars. I don't know the details, and that doesn't matter. For, and sadly, a little personal animus is going to creep into this, but for Robinson Green Beretta conceived design, school facilities improvements. Now, no matter what my opinion of them is, in my personal experience of well over 30 years of federal contracting, infrastructure, construction, and stuff like that, whatever, whatever can go wrong will go wrong when you're in construction. You will not foresee it, all right? And along with a whole host of issues that could never have gone wrong, no matter who's assuring you that they can't go wrong, they will, all right? And to date, the school committee, and, and I am not directing this personally at people. I'm standing here, and if, you know, if that RIDE application had been something done by people in my company, they wouldn't be in my company. I mean, that, that was a, that was a farce, and I saw a lot of public covering up, but oh, this part's unacceptable, that, they want to, they want us to look at this. It was a typical RGB work product, is what it was, and I don't see it getting any better. And you guys are hanging your hats on it. You're going to get, you're going to get burned badly, in my opinion, right? So today, school committee, building committee, and RGB, they've done nothing to demonstrate the technical competence to give any level of confidence to any taxpayers that they will submit or execute timely and/or acceptable and actually buildable construction documents. Now, I don't, I'm not saying they won't get past RIDE. I have no idea what RIDE's competence is, but I, I'm guessing it's not that. It's, it's, everything here seems to be focused on the finance. And I don't, I don't argue that that's not important. You know, you made an argument, if it's formidable, we got to do it. But that bypasses the stance, the question, doesn't make any freaking sense to do it, right? Okay, so we can, we want to rush and, and put in an application to RIDE and chase their money because, woo, it might not be there. Well, what are we getting for the money? That's where Gary started. He was trying to get you people to answer his question. What are we getting for it, right? And you can't answer it. I don't believe you can answer it. And if you can, I'd love to hear the answer, because it's not out there in the public information. From what I can see, the school committee, the school building committee, the town council, nobody has any idea what RGB has in mind. It's, it's, it's all smoke and mirrors. And I'm telling you, this is from a guy who knows smoke and mirrors, because I get, I put them out there and I tear them down, all right? So, and I'm sorry to ramble on, I'm going to finish up here, but it seems to me that the proponents of this bonding and this whole rush to come up with some plan, other than the plan that was put in place by a community consensus a couple of years ago, and a point was made that next election, I'm guessing a lot of the people who are in place now may not be in place, and there could be another upheaval. And yet, we're, we're wanting to commit 90 million on top of an exorbitant tax rate already. Forget, forget adding it, it's already too high. Now, I'm not saying we don't need to improve the facilities. What I'm saying is that, this is what I see here. Proponents' focus is and has been ensuring that SK throws something in front of RIDE to meet some deadline, right? Instead of ensuring that quality facilities are designed and built to actually meet the future needs, both in scale and technology that's required, right? You guys want to slap lipstick? I'm not saying you guys, please don't slap lipstick on a pig, right? And that's, I can guarantee you, with the quality of work that I've seen as far as design and construction estimates, and the, and the lack of any construction estimating over there, and the admitted lack of anybody having any knowledge about what we're going to find when we do this stuff, and is the money going to cover it, and, or is it not? And are we going to have this bond, and we're not going to be able to finish this? I'm going to tell you what, in the real world, that bonding, that financing would get no serious consideration until you had an 85 to 90% design, vetted design, vetted construction estimates, and somebody signed off on it. Somebody who had some skin in the game, right? And now, I don't know who the entity is around here that has skin in the game, because it seems to be a big collection, and I tell you who has skin in the game is the taxpayers, because they're footing the bill. You know, and I, clearly, I'm a little upset about this, but I really think you guys, somebody wants to take a step back and quit worrying about, are we crossing all the i's and dotting all the t's and getting all the money that's available out there and meeting some deadline? And we're talking about expanding some, I don't know, was it 30, 40-year-old middle school, doing something to either eliminate or try and get some revenue out of existing town properties that are currently of existing town properties that are currently in the school department. And I don't hear any, the only comments, discussion I've heard of building scalable, proper scale and technology, technologically appropriate, is with some past discussions that said, well, you know, we're going to, we're going to have a seven hundred square foot, you know, futuristic classroom here in this building. Jesus, if you want to attract students here, you better have a facility that is up to date, and I don't mean up to date yesterday or today, I mean five, ten years from now. Anyway, I'm sure you're going to see me up here again, but thanks for the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb Bergner. A couple of things. We didn't get any of the FAQ handouts, so do you think that they'll be available to the public as, they're on the website? Could I take one now?
Okay.
Did you use the questions that were in that Google survey that you did with the budget? Some, okay, because when I was sitting back there, I was looking through many of the comments, and I, we didn't go through the FAQs, and a lot of the comments from the people who filled out the survey seemed to address consolidation, lots of questions about why we're not closing more schools, and, you know, a lot of people, I tried to find comments that would be positive, but there are a lot of people who, I'm looking on my phone because it was in my drive, but like, a lot of people want the questions answered that Joe asked earlier, that, you know, everyone is saying that there are inefficiencies, but there's really no plan to address them. And that people ask why we are not consolidating and having less buildings, specifically the elementary schools, where Mattoonik might have, basically, Mattoonik and Wakefield could be combined into one school, and at some point, we are spending for multiple principals or multiple nurses, and that's where the inefficiencies come, because you're having that one whole extra person. I don't mean to, you're the expert, I'm sure you know. But when are we going to get there? That's what the community, when I read those comments, the community is asking, when is that going to happen? So I hope that this information's in here. And I was wondering, like, what if we did close buildings and redistrict? What savings would we get? And maybe we could get to a more reasonable ask. I don't know, because no one ever presents a budget that way to us. About the school facility plan, will there be an opportunity for the public to come and speak about the changes that have happened? I mean, it's, it's, there's been a lot in the last three or four months, and we haven't had that opportunity to do that before you're going to go vote on the bond? Do you, it seems like it's, the train is going really fast, and if you're not here at this meeting, you're not getting a chance to say a word about the new changes.
Can you just speak for a minute?
Sure.
We've been trying, Deb, to meet once a month at night.
Yeah.
To afford any, the building committee.
I know.
Not we, I'm speaking as the building committee, right? So we're trying to meet once, in the evening, to afford everyone the chance to come and speak. So every building committee meeting, any member of the public has an opportunity to weigh in on whatever, you know, issue they, and we welcome that, because we need to hear.
It's just very difficult when the ones are at, this one's Wednesday, eight-thirty.
It is.
And we have to take time out of work to come to that.
I agree, so that's why we've been meeting twice a month, so we're trying to meet.
But it's all going to be buttoned up in the next three weeks.
No.
It sounds like it. So, because at the last town council meeting, the town manager said that we were going to have a visioning session for Curtis Corner Middle School, and I think that we should have that before we, again, ride the high school train to Curtis Corner, because I've sat and I've heard lots of different things about Curtis Corner needs a new roof, and if that's three million dollars, and the ledge, or the good ledge, or the whatever, I feel like the cost of the Curtis Corner site continue to grow, and we are going to get very little. I do not want to build a Cadillac edition on a shack. My kids went there, years ago. It was bad then. And so if we're going to just put two editions on, one edition or whatever it is, the auditorium and the cafeteria, when we already have feasible, working things at the high school, it makes no sense that we're building a Cadillac edition when we already have something that's good. So I like the opportunity for the public to hear all of that. And then, I heard this this morning from someone who said, when we built Broad Rock, we were going to move the high school there, none of you were here, maybe twenty years on these rolls, but, but they didn't move the high school there because of the deed. So now, all of a sudden, the deed is unencumbered, but it was in the eighties, and we built in the nineties. So why Steve Alfred would have said we couldn't disregard the deed, I don't understand that. So maybe I'm not making clear sense on that one, but why we didn't move the high school to the Broad Rock site was related to the deed that we have at Columbia Street. But now we've decided that's not an obstacle, and I have serious concerns about people saying it's not a problem. It probably will be a problem. That's all.
Thank you.
I am Greg Sweet from Wakefield, and I'm not sure who to address the question. I was, I guess it is a question. Four years ago, the state approved two hundred and fifty million dollars for the schools to upgrade them. And do we know at this point how much of that has been spent? Or, not spent, but allocated?
I don't. Do you have that figure?
Do you know if it's first come, first served?
So, the way that they're trying to do this, as I understand it, is they're trying to refresh the pot. I mean, the idea was to get two hundred and fifty million dollars out there, not to spend that two hundred and fifty million dollars upfront, but to be reimbursing over time, so they'd have some money available in the account for a long period of time, and then to replenish the account periodically. So yes, it's first come, first served on the obligations, but they're not expending all of those monies at the moment of obligation, they're expending those monies as reimbursement. And how they're, how they're going to be able to, you know, extend that, or stretch it, or replenish it, I can't tell you. I don't know. They're going to need, they're going to need legislation to further capitalize that account at some point.
And conceivably, that money wouldn't be there when we, when it comes time for us to ask for it?
The two fifty is in addition to the general program that the state has always maintained for school housing aid. The school housing aid program had this additional capital put into it. We'd expect if the two fifty were extinguished, used, obligated, and not replenished, that we'd be falling back on the main school housing aid program, which is a thirty-five percent reimbursement for South Kingsdale.
So we're pretty much guaranteed them thirty-five percent? Or is that not really a guarantee, it's a presumed?
That's current law, so.
So it is guaranteed.
If they approve, if they approve.
Yeah.
A school housing aid program, that's the floor for their assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin Sullivan, and this is, I guess, the question, primarily for the school building subcommittee? I guess if that, is that the town entity responsible for overseeing the RGB contract and ensuring timely and quality work product? Is that, or is that town council? Is it your department? Who does that?
The RGB contract is with the school committee.
So it's the school committee, not a subcommittee?
It is not a subcommittee, it is the school committee that has a contract with RGB. They have received guidance and will continue to receive guidance from the school building committee, or the building committee.
Okay. So I guess my question then is, the school committee members and the school building subcommittee members who are involved intimately in it. Can anyone tell me, you, Ms. Kelso, talked about trying to have monthly meetings and even two a month, so the public can express their concerns, which is very nice. What information is available to the public to make, to even come up with informed questions, let them make informed decisions? And when I say information, I mean with regard to the work that RGB is doing, or is it, you know, in a black box that's going to go to RIDE? And it kind of reminds me, everything I've seen so far reminds me of when I heard Nancy Pelosi talk about the Affordable Care Act and say, we're going to pass it to see what's in it. At the rate they've been going, right, in past history, if you're, if you're rushing to get a bond on this November ballot, I doubt very seriously that even you guys will have a sufficient product out of that group in order to justify what you're trying to do. I doubt even more seriously that you will get anything in time to put in front of the public with enough time to digest it, you know, that we can give you meaningful feedback at these meetings, right, which should be. And again, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to pointy fingers, but is there, are there people on either of those committees who have any technical qualifications to review the stuff that RGB is giving you? You know, because everything that comes out in public is, it's deficient, it's late. I've been at some meetings where the RGB reps are like, hummina, hummina, hummina. I'm telling you, these people wouldn't last. I guess that's my question, is, would the entities who are responsible, are there any qualifications among them? Do they expect to get stuff on time to present to the taxpayers, so the taxpayers can make an informed decision? I don't see it happening. I see it being jammed, and not only will it not come out in time, what you're going to get is going to be of questionable value, and very well, it could or could not be accepted by RIDE. Forget about whether you can build it and get the money for it. There's a reason RIDE and every other government entity who subsidizes construction work won't pay you until they see it operating and functioning as it should be, because they've gotten burned over the years by all these good plans, and then it can't be built, or it wasn't built right. They're not giving you the money for it. I don't care what you think was pledged, right? And I see a huge risk for South Kingsdale for that kind of a thing. You know, if you think you're guaranteed thirty-five percent, so what? You're going to put us in debt to get thirty-five percent and chase another fifteen, but you have no idea what quality product you're putting out there in front of, you're not, so I see some kind of response.
Sure. In terms of the committee, it's made up of thirteen individuals, from the general public to town employees, to school department, and two council members, and two school committee members. From that regard, though, we all know that we're, nobody is a true professional in terms of being able to grasp the entire project. So during that process, we did hire a company called Peregrine. Who is the OPM on the entire project. And with their help and guidance, they, and they've also have been involved in East Providence, and I think Barrington as well. That's, we're relying heavily on our OPM, and that's how it's been happening throughout the state in terms of other school building committees having to rely on their project managers. We also had another project manager, Bentley Downs, that was involved in the process when it came to the security investable project, as well as, we're going to be finishing off parking lot project at Peasdale. So I can see your concern, but this has been a very long process. And it's difficult, because some people, or some of us have come in at different parts of this. And some of us have been around long enough to where we had a certain plan, then it was changed, and it was changed again. So I can see where some of the frustration comes from, but I do truly believe that everyone on that school building committee has the best interests of the town, and the schools, and the taxpayers in mind. But it's also difficult, too, because for a long time, we were meeting at eight o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday. Do I sense the frustration with RGB? Absolutely. You know, I can see where that comes from. But at the same time, there's, like I said, no one in our town staff, or in the building committee that we have, or on the school department, in my opinion, nobody's out there with malice intent or anything like that. They're really trying to rely on people like the Peregrine group, who came about after we interviewed several OPMs. And I forget the number, but I want to say that we, we looked at a number of OPMs, we then narrowed it down to the ones that we were going to interview, and then we interviewed five. It came down to two, and Peregrine was the one that ended up being recommended to the school committee. I'm not sure if that answers all of your questions, but.
The submission, talk to him about the submission, he thinks we're not going to see it.
The submission, talk.
It does address some of it, but I guess, I'm going to come back to you. I think the idea of having an owner's PM or an owner's rep as an architect or whatever is fine. I mean, it's necessary. It still comes back, and believe me, I don't for a moment think that anybody in these, I mean, you're not putting your time in here because you want to, you know, screw up the South Kingsdale school committee, education department. I understand that. Nobody has any egregious intent. And again, I don't want to, I'm not questioning personal motivation, qualifications, but so you've got a consultant engineer overseeing your consultant engineer. Who's overseeing your OPM? In other words, I know these are well-intended people, they come from the whole gamut, there's fourteen of them. Is there a single engineer that knows, that can go to Peregrine, sit down with their people, and not be fooled? I'm not saying that Peregrine, I'm not saying that Peregrine would try and pull any fast ones, nor would RGB, right? But if, if you don't, if you can't properly evaluate the progress and the product in front of you, you have no idea what these people are telling you. And their incentive is not the same as your incentive. They don't have an ownership interest. They have a billing interest, they want to complete, is exactly what RGB did back whenever we put that Phase One in, that was so deficient, as Joe said, the only way one is going to be improved is because it couldn't be worse. I couldn't agree with them more. I'm not trying to beat this, beat you guys up over this, I'm just pointing to, I see no recognition of these hard facts of construction and engineering and design. I see a lot of people with, who want to do the best and know a little bit about numbers, financial numbers, know a lot about financial numbers, and they're crossing every i and dotting every t, and all of that's going to be just fine. Well, what the hell is it you're buying? And I don't think you guys can answer that. I honestly don't, even with as much due diligence as you've been able to come up with.
Right, so we do have on the school building committee, we have the building official, we also have our town engineer. Now, the makeup of that school building committee is not something that we came up with, that's something that is kind of a mix between what is required by our town charter versus what the RIDE requires. So that's how the school building. So, that's how the school building...
I'm offering to hear that.
Came up. Right.
And so, those...
So, it wasn't...
Did we let RGB do what they did with RIDE the first round?
It's not that we let RGB do that with RIDE.
Are you paying their bills?
Somebody... The school committee, correct, has a contract with them. The initial submission of that report, one thing that I wasn't happy about, and it's public information, is that we, as the school building committee, didn't get that until days prior, which I can see...
I understand.
Right.
And I guess my question, are you confident that anything's gonna change? I guess that's the point I'm trying to get you guys to look at. Do you think it's gonna be any, is it gonna be materially better? I see nothing that tells me it would be. But again, I'm not, I don't have access to that information.
Right.
I don't care to have access to it. You know, I can see, I watch trends, I watch overall numbers, I watch percentages and cost per and all that, and it's not encouraging around here. That's, and I'm not trying to beat you guys up, I, you know, I don't have kids in the system. I understand, I don't want to see a deficient school system because I own properties in town that I'm gonna, I want to sell someday, right? Do I, am I driven by a goal of increasing student population? Hell, no. You know, I'm over, I'm well over 65. You know, I see us sacrificing, not sacrificing, I see us dedicating resources in town to schoolchildren, right? Nothing wrong with that, but at the expense of other priorities, be they elderly, life safety, fire, police, EMS, whatever, town maintenance, I think stuff does a pretty good job, but I don't think there's an equitable prorata consideration of the priorities versus the wants in this town. Sweet ran, I think I saw something his sign says wants versus needs or something like that. Sounded fright, but you know what? I don't think anybody around here really pays that much attention to it. If you want it, you go for it, and there's not that much evaluation on the need. The other thing I would say with this, and I'm gonna sit down, is a gentleman, I read his stuff frequently, I hear him up here, named Darrell Beasley, I'm sure you know who I mean. And while he can be repetitive and maybe not always the greatest thing to listen to, when you drill down through his stuff technically, he makes a lot of sense, you know, and I know that, or it appears to me that there's some kind of, whether it's a prejudice against him, and I don't know any old history around here, or whatever, he's looked at as more of an irritation than a potential source of information. And I think a little thought about that would maybe help in what you guys are trying to do anyway. Sorry for taking up so much time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any final comments from up here around the table?
Mr. President, just one note that I feel obliged to make here, and that is, the charter provision dealing with the delivery of the budget and budget message to the town council says honor before March 1st. However, in Section 4222, it says that when that date falls on a Sunday, it can be delivered on the Monday. It's been delivered to the town council on the Monday. And frankly, it's been delivered because of the extraordinary efforts of Amy Reiner and Zach Sol to get you a document that was not easy to put together this year.
Thank you, Rob. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll end this meeting here at 9:47. Thank you all for coming.